So this year is all about gathering stakeholder input, which is why we're doing these listening scenes. We have an online survey and there's other opportunities to kind of get feedback from people across the state over their broadband needs, you know, whether it's whether it's taxes or other digital equity derivatives. And then that funding is going to ultimately, or those plans, sorry, are going to be submitted to the federal government. There will be a public review process, so you'll kind of maybe hear from us again on a kind of smaller sort of statewide tour. And eventually the money will kind of start flowing into 2024 and 2025. With the with the goal honestly being by 2028 to see a significant reduction in the digital divide across Illinois. But it is quite a challenge, both affordability and access to less populated areas make it a very large challenge. Last thing that I kind of really wanted to touch on is currently the Connect Illinois program that I mentioned that got started in 2019. That is now in round three and it's, you know, we're there's millions of dollars basically available for grants. The ongoing rolling process for people to submit to kind of help get matching grants to extend broadband service with a various amount of projects. So you can visit our website and more. This kind of last page I think kind of has it all. The main website for us is broadband.u Illinois.edu. And there's an opportunity there to kind of get on our our newsletter or to email us at illinoisbroadbandlab@uIllinois.edu. So if this is of interest to you to learn more about state broadband efforts, just broadband overall, absolutely email us. Or the biweekly newsletter, I think is is our best way to get in contact. So there's a link there. You can find it on our website. This this edition that's gonna be coming out Monday is all about agriculture-focused broadband programming that we've been doing. With some really, really great success working with the Illinois Sporting Association to kind of bring fiber and other technologies to the farms themselves. Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak and to bring that back to you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
For updating us.
Yeah.
All right, 4.2 TIP 101, districts and economic development incentives with Mr. Schwab and UTAV.
For having me allow doing these presentations, particularly with newly elected officials, just because there's new perspectives under the report. I'd like to hear new perspectives as well as perhaps give a few that maybe you haven't heard before. And that's good goes for elected, newly elected, formerly elected, everything else. First of all, congratulations on your victories. I'm very happy for you and kind of want that as the city's TIP consultant and other economic development consultant. Hopefully we can work together. I'll keep the commercial short. We've worked with the city for several decades. I have not. Not only have to have worked for you for several decades, but I've worked with you for a few years now. It's been a lot of fun and I love working in Moline and Quad Cities. So the agenda for today's presentation are really to talk about why we want to use incentives. And then we're going to touch on three main incentives that you have at your disposal. TIP, business districts and enterprise zones. You've got all three in Moline. And then to talk about how they can overlap, you can stack those incentives and then briefly some other things to consider. So do you really need to use them? Well, here's some quick questions that if you can answer correctly, not correctly, but if you can answer them, it'll give you a good impression of whether you should use incentives. First of all, is there an area of your community that has opportunities for infrastructure renovation? If that answer is yes, maybe incentives are for you. If there is a need for public improvements in infrastructure, that can be that can be any sort of public improvements. Right now, the city's working on the East Gate TIP and that's on the far eastern side of town. And we're both working to retain a long-time Moline employee as well as mitigate some of these stormwater infrastructure issues that are happening in that area that we both serve the business as well as the neighborhood around it. In that case, in the East Gate TIP, the answer is yes. All right, so we decided to use TIP. Does your community plan propose economic development? Okay, the other two, let's forget about them for a second. If you have a plan on the books, you've done public engagement hopefully. You've got feedback from the community and you've called for economic development in a particular part of town. It could be an industrial park, it could be downtown. And if the answer is yes, then incentives might be an option for you. Now, question number four, this is an important one. This is this this gets to the legal aspects of using use of these tools. If the area is struggling in any way or could be considered blighted, doesn't mean that your city's not nice. It just means that a particular area qualifies according to the state law that dictates how you can use these tools. The answer is yes, that you might use incentives. And then finally, but certainly not least, if projects are happening, if a project's gonna happen without use of incentives, this may be stand up on my soapbox, but don't use them, all right? Don't don't use incentives if you don't have to, if they feel comfortable and and are able to achieve a rate of return that's acceptable acceptable for them. Let them come in, walk them in with open arms and and you don't need to give them any more money than that you already do. So let's start with TIP. TIP, because sometimes it's some some parts of the state, it's a four-letter word. It's it's an acronym. TIP stands for tax increment financing. It's a property tax-based incentive. It used to be sales tax and now it's just property taxes. So all of the taxing bodies generate some of their revenue from property taxes, right? So they're all co-investors along with the city and TIP as an economic development. So I always preach that you should have good relationships with them. They're all striving for very similar goals, similar geographies and similar things. So you should have good working relationships with them. And keep in mind that they are the co-investors in these tools with it. If you do not crack, if you don't attract private taxable investment, you will have no TIP money. Okay, if it's the city owning property, if it's nonprofits or taxing bodies, they're all tax exempt. You won't have any TIP revenue at all. You have to have private investment. So that should be part of your priority in any TIP this year. And of course, the area has to qualify whether it's stacking. Let's get over it. Not gonna deal with what qualifies and what doesn't. This is a very, these discussions. This chart, you're gonna see if you attend any TIP presentation, you're gonna see some variation of this chart. Basically what it is, is it's time on the bottom and dollars or it property value on the left-hand side. So in year one, you establish a base value and as projects are completed, property values increase. The taxes that are paid on those increased values is collected into the purple-ish area and that's your TIP fund. And those TIP funds can be spent on different infrastructure projects that can also be granted back to developers, the businesses and have some sort of incentive package. Okay, after the TIP goes away, you see that spike at the very end of it and year 23-ish, everything goes back to the taxing values, right? The city, the school district, the fire protection district, the county. Everybody gets to collect taxes on all of the growth that occur, hopefully during the life of that TIP. Standard life is 23 years. That's 23 years of collections. It's 24 calendar years because after taxes are paid in one year and they're distributed all the years. So it's really 24 calendar years. TIPS can be ended early. They can be extended further to 35 and some even to 47 years. Quick example, this is the math behind TIP. So you got a property that's paying 10,000 bucks a year in taxes. That 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 TIP is established, so all the taxing bodies continue to collect their portion of that $10,000 tax. After the project is complete, the new property taxable because jobs, more building, higher taxes. You got a $30,000 tax, but $20,000 is what we refer to as the tax increment, hence tax increment. The $20,000 comes in every year. City can set up an agreement where they can send back to the business, where they spend on infrastructure or it just continues to accrue and spend on larger projects later on. So that's how the TIP, the tool functions. Moline has lots of tips, 13, and we're currently looking at another one. That's the East Gate TIP that I mentioned earlier. Basically, the city's used it for a variety of purposes, including the renovation of stored properties, infrastructure improvements, and always seeking, hopefully to create jobs, additional tax revenue for all the taxing bodies. Business districts. This one's based on sales tax. So you gotta consider all the other questions that we mentioned earlier. But the important ones here are, does the area currently generate taxable sales? Whatever you charge sales tax for right now will also charge and generate business district tax revenue. So you either have taxes generated now, so when you add the business district tax, you have business district revenue coming in to be spent on any of the same things as TIP. Or, or I should say and/or, you also have the opportunity to bring in more businesses to generate additional business district revenue. So it's a similar principle. It's just sales tax instead of property taxes. Here's a picture of the Captain's Table Restaurant. Business here locally that was the result of business district projects. The municipality can set up a maximum tax rate of 1%. Again, that's an added tax on top of your local sales taxes and the state sales tax. And again, anything that you charge sales tax on right now will also apply to business district tax. They last 23 years. If there's any money left in the pot, at the end of it, it goes right back to the city's general. Here's a nice graph that you can take with you. Please use it. It's all the things that you can spend business district and TIP money. Right, there's a lot of overlap and then there's also things that you can spend in one tool and not two. Last tool, enterprise zones. You have the Quad City Enterprise Zone. It's a multi-jurisdictional enterprise zone that includes various communities. East Moline, Moline, Long, Silvis, Rock Island, I think that might be it. And then Rock Island County has to participate as well. Enterprise zones offer two main benefits. Your property tax abatement is you just don't pay taxes, right? TIP is you pay your taxes and you might get it back. Property tax abatement is you just don't pay taxes at all or you don't pay very much for an extended period of time. And then the other one is a sales tax exemption on building materials that you purchase for use on a project. The Quad Cities, until this afternoon, I thought that the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone offered property tax abatement. I recently read the designating ordinance for the meeting and I realized that I don't believe you do offer property tax abatement off of the Quad Cities Enterprise Zone. Ryan, can you get that? Okay, sorry about the correction there. You still offer exemption since tax on building materials now. So if something gets done in the enterprise zone and the building materials are purchased in Illinois, the contractor can have a certificate that exempts them from paying sales tax on that. Those last for, the zones last for 15 years with a possible full length of 5 years. Each zone, and this applies to any of these tools, these are all up to you, right, as the as the city council. The policy behind these tools is all up to you. What you spend money on is set by law. But the individual deals that you enter with businesses and developers or infrastructure projects that you pursue, these are all up to you. So it's a globally driven tool. Another chart for you. So this one is how you can overlap these tools to work together. And there is overlap in Moline between enterprise zone and TIP and I think enterprise zone and business districts. By and large, you can do them all at the same time. The only thing you can't do is enterprise zone tax abatement in a TIP. You guys don't offer that anyways, so let's move on. But basically, it can be a pretty potent mix of of incentives. So you can do the business, sales tax off building materials, enterprise zone tax credits, that's coming from states taxes that you're crediting business district sales taxes. In terms of policies and I'll take questions in the comments and we'll talk about it a little bit. All of these tools can be amended. I have to put them in place, so they all have to do with a specific geography or a part of your community. They can all be amended after the creation to change the boundary or change types of incentives that you offer. There's reporting that's done by the city or the enterprise zone administrator, particularly for TIPS and Intera. Oswald takes care of that for the city. The business district hotel tax are very similar to your municipal hotel tax. That's strictly collected by the city and it's it's up to you to enforce that. Many cities have standard policies and applications. I always encourage cities when I can to to have a standard application. That just means that you're being consistent and transparent with all businesses and all the public. They know what sort of information is required of a developer to even get an incentive. I think it just helps, helps with transparency and and trust with the public and trust with the development. Last but not least, I always end on this point. One of the best incentives that the city can offer is great customer service and business friendly attitude. Ultimately, if nobody's asking for money, at least walking through the zoning process, building building permit process, it'd be a good neighbor and hopefully do things better. Questions about economic incentives? So what did you have for the expert? Do you have any questions at all? Is that staff or maybe Bob know? And I'd love to to answer any questions that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to our last presentation, Community Development Block Grant Presentation. Let's see.
Thank you, Your Honor. Welcome to the Old Soreton. I'm your host, Brendan. I'm David Whitman. I'm the Community Development Manager. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the CDVG team. This is the community development block. You're gonna hear that acronym a lot. What is CDVG? What can CDVG be used for? And how does CDVG produce the Moline? Stay a minute, turn to the video here, please.
Not all internet is created equal. We build ours to keep you connected and protected. You may not realize it, but there's a lot more that goes into maintaining the neighborhood besides just taking out the trash and mowing the grass. Over time, things like roads, streetlights and playgrounds need to be replaced. If these improvements aren't made, an entire neighborhood can deteriorate and it makes it impossible for residents to take pride in where they live. I hear you're saying that's a lot of money and where's it going to come from? Believe it or not, Wausau has been receiving a grant to do this very thing and we're excited to tell you about it. It's Community Development Block Grant Week and in this video, we're going to tell you what it is, what it does and the impact it's made in Wausau's neighborhoods. So what is the Community Development Block Grant and why have I never heard of it? The Block Grant is a federal grant distributed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and is given to select communities with 50,000 people or more, although Wausau is an exception to this rule. The city of Wausau has received this grant every year since 1976 and it's made a tremendous impact on your community in ways you probably haven't realized. Historically, Wausau has received between $500,000 and $800,000 each year from this grant, which is specifically spent on improving low-to-moderate income neighborhoods in Wausau. The Community Development Block Grant can be spent in many different ways. Some of these include street repairs, playgrounds, low-level lighting, nonprofit organizations, home repairs, new construction and blight elimination. Have you driven down Prospect Ave or Seventh Street at night and noticed the nice lighting along the boulevard? That was built using the Block Grant. How about the street repair on Macintosh or the new sidewalks near Athletic Park? Those were also built using the Block Grant. Have you noticed the beautiful new playground at Oak Island Park along the river? You guessed it, it was built using the funding from Block Grant. This only scratches the surface because like we said before, the city of Wausau has been receiving the Block Grant since the seventies. Let me tell you more about it. Nonprofits are important to our community and we use the Block Grant funding to support them. Take the New Community Partners Campus for instance. Not only did it help pay for the new construction, but it is also assisting the nonprofits inside it, like the Free Clinic with lab testing and medical supplies. North Central Community Action Program with rent assistance and security deposits. And Catholic Charities with the Warming Center and many of their other programs. The Block Grant also funds scholarships for low-to-moderate income families that want to send their children to Wausau's Conservatory of Music, paying for their lessons and their instruments. Additionally, the Block Grant funds programs at the Mon American Center such as their teen program and their entrepreneurial education. As you can see, nonprofits are important to our community and the Block Grant helps them in some really special ways. Money from the Block Grant has also helped low-to-moderate income homeowners afford to make much-needed repairs and renovations. Through the city's homeowner rehab program, homeowners can receive low-interest loans of just 2% with $50 per month minimum payments. Over the years, this program has financed millions of dollars in assistance to homeowners in the community. In the past, the city of Wausau would also partner with the North Central Technical College to build houses that would be sold to low-income families in the community. Unfortunately, this program has been discontinued by NTC. But when everything was in motion, 13 of these beautiful houses were built and you guessed it, funded by the Block Grant. Lastly, some of our most impactful projects and those that we are most proud of are blight elimination. Over time, once beautiful and thriving homes and businesses unfortunately fall to ruins that no one wants in their neighborhood. For example, on Fulton and Seventh, a once condemned house was demolished and new apartments were built that fit perfectly into the neighborhood. You wouldn't even know it's a multifamily residence if you didn't look closely. It just fits in so well. And most recently, the old Ponderosa Motel that was falling apart and deemed uninhabitable after a fire years ago, was leveled and replaced by a new multi-unit low-income apartment complex. So that brings us to today. Once again, this year, the city of Wausau has received the Community Development Block Grant and has been given $617,593 to put towards improvement projects. One of our projects that we're very excited about is building a new park on Jefferson Street. This park will be a great addition to the neighborhood and allow families quick access to an ADA accessible park right where they live. We're also using some of the funds to upgrade pedestrian crossing signals and push buttons to be ADA accessible. What this means is that these street crossings will give audible commands when crossing the street. This upgrade will complete an accessibility route through the downtown for blind and visually impaired users. Lastly, one of our long-term projects with the Block Grant has been to build a multi-unit apartment on the west side of the city. We're also working to build single-family homes around the city that will be rented or sold to low-income families. So there you have it. That's the Community Development Block Grant in a nutshell. As you can see, the impact of the Block Grant is very far-reaching with its impact in so many areas. It's important to know that in many cases, the Block Grant is not the only thing funding these projects. There is usually additional support from other brands and funding from public and private entities. If you'd like to learn more about the Block Grant and how it works, you could follow the link in the description that will take you to the city's website. Every year, there are meetings of the Community Development Committee where they discuss how this money will be allocated for the year and you're more than welcome to participate. Thank you for watching and we hope you have a awesome day.
I think that's a great illustration where you can use your CDVG funds. Let me give you a history on CDVG. So back in 1974, Congress passed the Title VII. That's where CDVG was formed. So this year, we celebrated the 49th anniversary for CDVG. Next year will be the 50th. So just like that video, staff is working with our communications team. We're gonna do a video, about five minutes, but we're gonna have 50 projects we're gonna highlight. One every day on social media leading up to CDVG being a formative year. So that's already underway. How did we, how did we become an entitlement? We became an entitlement because of property at the time, because of our housing stock at the time and our conditions at the time. So once we became an entitlement, we're guaranteed funding for every year moving forward. We are a Formula B entitlement. There's a Formula A where it has a different weight on the points and Formula B. So at the time that we became an entitlement, we were Formula B. So this year, I think we received a little over $800,000. And typically what we use those funds for are infrastructure projects, housing projects, economic development as well as job creation. Staff gets the allocation and we sit down and we're like, okay, let's do this project, let's do this project. And then we take it out to the citizens. They have 30 days to comment on those funds. They have two hearings that they can attend and give us any comments and we can change anything that we've written in our plan. So every five years, as an entitlement community, we're required to do a follow-up. So for example, our next plan starts 2025. So 2025 will be the first year of the plan of our project for the chapters of that plan. Right now, the 2023 plan is the fourth chapter of the budget plan that we're in. So in the plan, we're suggesting to HUD the projects that we develop. HUD will tell us, yes, you can do them or no, you can't. This is after we've gathered the citizen input, taken it through the hearing process, law to council, which in council, we have to approve the activities in the budget, right? And then we send it up to HUD. HUD has 45 days to approve it or disapprove it. So if we don't hear from HUD, it's approved, we can move forward. But in the meantime, staff is doing all the background, which consists of a lot of environmentals that we have to check. And then on the backend, so we send in the plan, that's saying what we're gonna do for that year. On the backend, at the end of the year, the following 90 days, we have to tell them what we actually did. And then they're gonna send us a letter. We actually have the papers over to run this plan every year. I know we don't have the paper, but we can make some modifications. So far, we've been okay. Couple things that we done here at Moline, you know, you see what they did up in Los Conses. When you go down Thursday night and listen to the bands down at Bass Street, that is brought to you by CDVG. We took $3 million, did a Section 108 loan, we got 13 parcels, we relocated businesses, we land banked and we created some land over there for Bass Street. So some of the impacts of that loan, as you can see, you have the Bass Street over there, you have River Station, the Pony Building and Stony Creek. We attracted over $3 million in public-private dollars for that project. That was a fantastic project. I'm very talking to you. Another one that you might see going on, we've been working on the Porosente Streetscape. That is a rendition of it up top. Sorry, it was a cloudy day. When I take that picture, that is what it looks like right now. We want to bring in the Porosente sign that you see in the top left-hand picture and we have a little more flatwork to do down there to complete that Streetscape. Another project that we've done is Hawk Hollow. This is Hawk Hollow. Where Moline Public Hospital was, you had different phases up there where they put in the senior home and then they did houses, houses across the street. But below those houses, everybody was kind of using that as a dunking ground. You seen all the concrete, you seen all the amounts of dirt. No developer wanted to come in because it didn't have infrastructure. So CDVG stepped up, we put in the water and the sewer and the flatwork and then we turned it over to the developer who put in housing. So this project is not funded by CDVG, but I love the picture, so I want to show you guys the difference. You know, we help people, we have their homes. This is a before picture and I'll give all this credit to Brad. Now Brad found this house. CDC, Moline CDC took it over and sold it to a contractor and that was the end result of that house. But that just shows you a little bit about the rehab process. Remarkable change, I think the CDB, Moline CDC got $25,000 for it and they sold it for over $200,000. So a great story there. So I kind of already talked about how we have to do what we call a consolidated plan and then a chapter of that plan, which was our end and after plan. That tells our story, what we hope to do for that year. At the end of that year, we do what's called a table, which gives the results of that story. Whether we actually mattered in parks and we turned that in. So along that process, we have what's called the CAC committee, Citizen Advisory Council on Urban Planning. They facilitate the hearings for public input. Anyone from the public can either mail in comments, email comments, come down and curse it. And if they have any questions on anything that we're suggesting, let us know about it. So we can amend them or make them adequate changes at that time before we bring it to you guys. So all our projects are based on either a low, moderate area, what you see in the yellow here. All these spots in the yellow are low mod areas where we can do an area bit of it. So you see a lot of the Streetscape going on. All these spots in the yellow are low-mod areas where we can do an area bit of it. So you see a lot of the Streetscape going on, when you see Bass Street going on, um, infrastructure projects. We don't have to certify someone's income. If we have a project there, we can go on and move forward. We're doing another phase of the Porosente Streetscape, trying to finish that up, and then we're gonna work with the Porosente Census Track, uh, members, businesses, and homeowners on Adaption Memorial Park down there. So those are two projects that we have going on right now with the infrastructure down there. Otherwise, if it's not by low-mod area, it's by income. So say you need a new water heater or you want a new roof. If it's by total household income, we have to certify your income, and those are the current numbers right now. Normally, the numbers come out in April, but HUD does not produce that yet. So what am I asking of council tonight? Tonight, we have two items on the agenda. One is from our twenty nineteen annual action plan. It's a number five. And the reason that we have to continue to go back to twenty nineteen for that annual action plan is because that's when we got the CARES Act. So the CARES Act money for CDG is totally different from our original allocation. With that, they kinda loosen some of the regulations, like for example, we only need a five-day comment period instead of a thirty-day comment period. And so this one had the five-day comment period. All these activities, and the activities, if you look at your fist, your fist are your activities and the projects are your fingers. So that's one way to look at it. All these activities have previously been approved by council. What we're asking for in this amendment is to reallocate the dollars. So you can see that we're making quite a donation, uh, reallocation to the food system. We've done five rounds of COVID food vouchers. So like for Easter, for the holidays, we leave and give away high-end food vouchers. And we have a lot more money left. So originally, HUD had told us you had to use eighty percent of your money by this year, by June of this year. So we're like, okay, well, what project are we gonna give this to? We can't keep giving out food vouchers. We're never gonna catch up. Because when we got our money, everyone else was getting their money. Currently in Illinois, there's forty-seven entitlement communities, you know, nationwide thousands of us. Um, but there's so many grants that are addressing rent, addressing food, addressing broadband. So everything we were doing, somebody else was doing. But we were still allocating money to it. And one of the things with the COVID money, it has to be tied back to COVID. You just can't come up with a project and say you wanna do it, because if you can't tie it back to COVID, then it's not eligible. So we have money left over, so staff got together and we said, okay, let's put our money together. So I reached out, I've never been in a food bank. I said, you guys do this every day, you know, you guys, can you assure me that the money's gonna be used here at Moline? If we, if I get council to approve it, will we can make a donation to you guys? They said, absolutely. So matter of fact, if you guys do approve this tonight, we already have a work plan in place, so when they come here for that presentation, they're gonna talk to you guys about it. So that's where we would like to put our money. Uh, like the extra money that's in Rock Island, they're doing like broadband in one of the nursing homes. We're choosing to keep ours in the field of food. As you know, the inflation of food is still going to happen. Food is still high. So that's an amendment that I'm asking you guys to approve at the ca, I mean, at the council meeting. The one that I'm asking you to approve at the council meeting that will go to Cal next week, these are new activities. This is a new annual action plan. As you can see, our action plans average at least about two hundred pages when it's all seven done. And when we do the plan every five years, you're about three hundred, three hundred twenty-five pages. But the bulk of it that you really need to read is the budget. These are the activities that we're proposing, and these are the dollar amounts that we're proposing that, that is also in your slides. And I will make any questions.
We've clarified what you said you were asking for when, because you mentioned, you just mentioned a Cal item after council meeting, which is opposite.
Isn't it, I'm sorry, maybe, isn't the twenty twenty-three on the council, I mean, on the Cal?
Yes.
And then the, and the twenty nineteen, maybe I did it three times. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just had it. We just make sure we gotta do it.
Oh, thank you for that question. Yep.
Yeah.
Any questions about CDG and what I'm asking you guys to approve? So once we send it up to HUD, again, HUD has forty-five days to approve it. Uh, I'm pretty confident in the twenty nineteen substantial amendment because we actually talked to HUD. When we said, hey, we would like to go make three hundred thousand dollars to the River End Food Bank. Is that okay? And we got it in writing. It's okay, so.
Mr. Grant said one thing, K, um, neighborhood infrastructure. Is that like you're referring to Porosentia and Reservoir, that type of thing, and flatwork and that we're talking about here?
Sure, yes. Neighborhood, uh, infrastructure, uh, program that allows us to do water, sewer, Streetscape. Before, we used to have a program called Sidewalk. We used to have a program called Water, you know, so we're like, let's just put it into infrastructure. Someone comes to me with a proposal, then we have a program all ready for it. So we just consolidated all the dollars.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Thank you for the questions.
All right, thank you, girls.
Okay. Well, are there any, there are no questions on the agenda, or do you, you wouldn't have any? Great. We move on to our Cal agenda items.
And I must read this entire thing, yes.
Okay, six point one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to enter into an agreement and to execute all necessary assurances and certifications to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development for CDVG entitlement funding under the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four as amended certain projects and programs for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and approving projects and program recommendations of the City of Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy for the use of twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Funds and the twenty twenty-three Annual Action Plan, which contains said projects and programs, and authorizing the mayor to implement the, those approved projects and programs upon the approval of the City of Moline twenty twenty-three Annual Action Plan by the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, and to exercise any and all powers required to obtain such funding and to implement those approved projects. Presented by Mr. Brian, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, a discussion by council. All clear what this money is being amended to. Hearing none, other questions? Roll call, please.
Other person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Nessius?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Eight eyes, one name, and most of passes.
Includes our business on the Cal. Um, is there any public comments this evening, Chief?
Without a list, we have to survey the crowd.
Okay, is there any public comments this evening? Seeing none, uh, we'll close out the Cal and call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands by nation under God, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Schmidt, you have any other questions?
No, you're up.
Roll call, please.
Other person, Murphy?
Present.
Nessius?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Sidian?
President.
Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Number twelve point one, a resolution approving the proposed amendment substantial amendment five, the City of Moline's twenty nineteen annual action plan, substantial amendment four, approved by Council of Revolution ten sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-one for the purpose of program fund reallocation, and authorizing the mayor to be equipped to execute the test through program activities set forth in the City of Moline's twenty nineteen annual action plan, substantial amendment five, upon the Department of Housing and Urban Development's approval of said amendments five.
Motion in a second, please?
Motion, true, second.
Presented by O'Brien, seconded by Nessius. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
KJ, I'm probably, this is probably for you. Um, looking at the round three small business relief loan grants program reducing reality, is that related to the monies that was earmarked to boost program, or is that? I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what is and is not the crossing paths.
Very good question. Uh, that is still a, a program for COVID. Uh, we did it a last round where we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars available. We received seven applications. So it's kind of pays in itself out. Uh, we're gonna review those seven, so we said, let's just reallocate that money, because then we, we did it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Other person Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Nessius?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Eight eyes, one name, and most of passes. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Well, we move to our round table discussion, strategic planning, Mr. Vitas. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the new council, and also welcome back to the current board. And welcome to all of you. It's great we can have you on board. Uh, gonna try and keep the front end sleek, or, yeah, we have the directors here, so as questions happen, you'll be able to get some immediate answers on certain questions you may have. Before I start, to clear, we did our homework assignments. Yeah, they all did. I think if they did, we have extra forms that you can fill in as we go. I mean, the real objective for your feedback, critical at this point. Um, but you know, last week, we just got in a real quick overview of the strategic plan. David is the right one.
Yes, the warrant.
The warrant, yeah, the warrant out, the lettering, yeah, yeah. Kinda remembered that from last time, so. Anyhow, just real quick, you know, we reviewed our vision and our mission. Those were established two years ago. Actually, the mission was established two years ago. And we wrote the vision for the plan going forward for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six plan. So this is gonna carry a lot of people through the Trump office and FBI unless they decide to run again. So it's, uh, it's a pretty significant investment on our time. Um, so basically, just looking at that, we're going about through effective, ethical, transparent governance. Moline will continue to be a municipal leader in Illinois, you know, always has been. Remember, the thirty-seventh largest city in the state, thirty-six if you don't count Chicago. So we are a big player in the state of Illinois, remember that. So to be a municipal leader in Illinois with a staff that delivers exceptional and physically responsible services, of which diverse, multicultural community, you're proud of, because that's who you are. Kind of encapsulates Moline, that we are very different and unique than many other cities, and very similar to ourselves. Our mission did not change, is to act in a financially responsible manner while providing quality and efficient city services and creating a sustainable city. But we're doing our job right financially. We are sustainable. We're getting all these wonderful things that have been happening and going on in the city for decades, and as well into the future. And we got regular reports from the finance department, so you're solid. Means you have money to spend and projects to do, programs to run. So there were three pillars. There originally were five, but there were three pillars we settled in on, and were basically community-driven pillars. So this was what the citizens responded to when they were reached out to back in twenty-one. What was important to them? You know, to guide all of our goals, all of our objectives, all of our programs, all of our projects. Infrastructure was number one. These are actually in order, so you know. Infrastructure, which includes, as you know, the water system, the sewer system, streets, sidewalks, any and all transportation, reformal transportation, any, all type model, bicycles, now you can hear me, uh, math, there you are, bicycles. Uh, and with special attention to twenty-first century needs such as broadband, low-carbon electricity, breathable, high-quality air, and the environment. You know, you could write that for almost the whole country. That's what people are really interested in, bottom line. That's what they want from their government, and that gives them the quality of life that they're choosing or quality of place that they reside in. Quality of place was number two on the list. And it's quality of places, community with attributes and amenities that make Moline a place people want to live, a place people, uh, wanna play. It includes upkeep of their homes, their neighborhoods, we've heard that from citizens, and opportunities for health, recreation, parks, library, arts, and culture. We are heavily invested in that as a community. We have over six hundred acres of parks and open space. Some of the beautiful park systems here in the Quad Cities, you know, that helps create that quality of life, that quality of place. And that was what they were talking about, number two item on the list. And then lastly, can't have all of that once you got an economy, right? So they realized that and said, the economy is the third pillar. So economic development is the foundation of a healthy community, living wage, jobs for the people who reside here, all age groups, equity and inclusion of women and minority groups, nurturing and growing small businesses, attracting new business, retaining existing longstanding businesses, AKA par instruments. Great example in that tip. And the environment, and it covers this pillar. So this is a very broad pillar, but it probably supports everything really above and one and two. Right? Because without it, one and two aren't gonna happen. So there's a balance here, and there's a synergy between these three pillars that work, and that's how we get where, where we're at, what we've been doing. Um, not gonna go through this whole list. I hope you took time to read it, because it's probably a rough one, I do. Tomorrow, not tonight. The goals, the goals that are completed are significant, and they cross all, all of the pillars. You can see all the number, all, all the ones, the twos, the threes, those all relate to those three pillars. And I'm proud to say that the team, staff, deliver these results, literally, I probably forget those. Year one of our plan going into year two, which we're currently at, that was the result. So a lot of hard work, a lot of labor. They go up really good these things up off the ground, and it's a little bit of what else to you. You can always ask questions about these because as we go forward, now that these are done, they won't be visible anymore in your twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six plan. They become a part of the history of the city's success. And they will be always visible, but they won't be built into the next plan. Uh, goals that are on track, look at this list. You add those two together, go back and look at that, look at that. I mean, we had eighty-five goals. Eighty-five goals. And that was no small task. I've never had eighty-five goals in any city, so this was pretty impressive. Thanks to the staff, these goals are actually in various stages of completion. Some of them are ninety percent complete. You can see that in the action report, see where they're actually at. You can track every one of these. If there's a special interest for you or your constituents, or they bring these things up to you. We're in the process of getting these all done, and if they're up there, they're funded. Remember, strategic plan is only good if it's attainable. The goals have to be realistic, and they have to be fundable. They should be measurable, should be able to measure where we're reaching those goals. So those are the goals that are currently on track. I won't read that list, but they, some of those, and I will say this, like, if you're a citywide broadband, let's do the first one. That launched after a year and a half, two years of, of a lot of intense work, it had done. That project planned, uh, launched in March of this year. That project will end in the summer of next year. So this one is going to slide over because it continued, right? It's gonna be done in twenty-four. So several of these that are up here will go beyond just twenty-three. They will move into twenty-four. It'll be a part of your strategic plan that we will adopt, and we will pull those out for you. But it should know which ones they, um, we don't have, we have looked at that for you. Right, Sam? Uh, some goals that are, are behind, it means they're behind because we may have started them, might have had to stop them or slow them down. Uh, this is an easy list to look at. It's a quiet zone, it's a very highly developed project. Your favorite dry, dryer is heading up. It calls multiple entities at the federal level, locally here, locally the NSF Railroad, the Iowa Interstate Railroad, uh, Illinois Department of Transportation. This is a complex project. But this is the project that would bring an end to the nonstop whistling that you hear through the, so loving intersections, man?
Yes.
Eleven crossings, I said the intersections, I meant crossings.
I get you.
You know what I mean. I know you. Thanks. So anyhow, as we, as we move that project forward, that's a multi-year project. We don't have an end date on that project right now. Um, but I would, I would say, while you're sitting in those chairs, we should get that done. But it's going to take multiple years, and it's going to take, is it twelve million dollars estimate?
Uh, not that much.
Okay, yeah. So anyhow, it was up to twelve, it's coming down, it's a good sign. So that's just an example of, of a very complex margins. Then if you go into crime-free housing, code enforcement monitoring, uh, those are part of that comprehensive housing goal that we talk about. We had a work, a workshop in here, it was a previous council, two months ago, and in there, we talked about what it would take to put that program in place, you know, and finding six hundred fifty thousand dollars accidentally to make it really work. Requires people, requires equipment, requires vehicles. You know, that work is not done inside an office, that's fieldwork for the most part. So we're looking at that and coming back with the comprehensive housing program, and hopefully that becomes one of our, one of our, uh, strategic goals, objectives. So anyhow, expanding, uh, what they're doing at the library, of course, the multi, multicultural programs, that's a lot of donation money, I believe if I'm not mistaken. So raising awareness, getting more money indoors to grow that program greater than it is. Uh, the gun unit, chief, to that, um, and then the mobile crisis response system programs. So we have some that are just a little bit behind, but there's reasons for that. Then we have those that are really not starting, or if they were started, they went forward. And, and we have a natural current plan, plan and opportunity, uh, has been tried, tried, tried before, and has never been successful. I'll let the experts in, they won't speak to that, and I'm looking at Eric, and I'm looking at Rod Schick. Uh, then the landlord certification program, AKA license possibly, gotta get that word in there. Uh, this particular program is also part of that housing program. So housing, as KJ will tell you, is probably one of the most complex things you can get engaged in, because now you're talking about people, personal property, and their most significant investment. So we have to be careful how we treat those programs as we influence them. And then the one-stop shop, we can tell you that even though there was a reallocation of the dollars, but during the course of the fiscal year, uh, that program may have stopped in terms of physical location, but in terms of the underlying software to support it, that process is well underway. You're still exploring it, you're still working toward it, and we will get that up and running, for there is a physical location for that one-stop shop. Okay? And then new ideas, right? Environmental, it's a big topic, housing, huge topic, infrastructure. I mean, these are probably the three, three biggest issues that we're dealing with, it's infrastructure. You know, I just shared with you the pavement index, uh, program. Something to always keep around, it's a valuable tool for you, uh, as we talk about the CIP going forward, and as we deal with requests from residents, you know, throughout the year. Everybody has a need, believe you, you're gonna hear it, uh, especially couples. So roads, stormwater management, huge issue in the city, expensive issue to take care of in some respects. And, uh, long overdue, so a big, big, big area that we're gonna be looking at. And that is very much also ties back into the, yeah, by, the, uh, we're in a discharge in stormwater, gotta know where you're discharging it, what are you discharging? Water and sewer, you know, got a great water sewer system, that'll be the best on the Illinois side of the river. And, uh, and it is a significant investment, and, uh, we're looking at ways to move the excess capacity that users who need it, uh, thereby benefiting our own residents and the rate structure that is in place today, keeping our rates down. You know, and then the public infrastructure overall. Uh, housing, of course, inspections, the land bank, which just got launched, MCTC, which we moved over to, uh, we do Moline, Housing Authority, there at the table, and Hattie Dabby Bill's houses. Uh, they have those houses for us, it's, uh, there's a lot of players, just like dealing with the, with the railroad issue, with the quiet zone. There's multiple players involved in the housing issue. You know, and then environmental, there's a big push nationwide, and there's a lot of money on the table. And we're already starting to pursue, uh, congressional appropriations, appropriations here in Illinois. Uh, so we're putting out, putting out the requests, and then we're looking for the grants on top of that. So those millions or billions that are floating around, they're, they're definitely taking, but you have to get your house in order to ask, so. You know, the, the council was, was, uh, ahead of the game, adopted the, uh, the EV ordinance. Uh, I don't believe anybody else has an EV ordinance here locally yet. Uh, but that's the first major step for making sure that not only do we address EV needs along the corridor, the corridor funding that's available, but then there's community funding that's available as well. And we're partnered with, we'll end up partnering with our neighboring communities on your side of us, as well as with MetroLink. Uh, we've been taking the lead on that for some time now. Start bringing those charging stations to strategic locations here, here in the city, either along the corridor, or, you know, where the need is the greatest. Exploring solar energy, um, whether that's the solar farm discussion, that's a goal that's in here already. Uh, that's one that, that we are going to look very, very hard at in terms of, is it viable, does it make sense, what is the turn investment on something like that? You know, and does it give us this, you know, energy independence locally that could help drive down our costs? We spend nearly a million dollars a year for energy, this is it. Little less, but pretty close. So we have inexpensive rates, that's what they say, right? I don't believe what I see on TV, but they say we have inexpensive rates, so we do, that's great, but there's ways that we could become independent. Even though the school district had conversation with that, was quite interested in this because I'm sure they use more energy than we do possibly, or as much. So that all translates into cost savings, that all translates into tax, property tax stabilization. So those projects have, have been a real purpose for us. So go beyond that, I'm done with that, that's good. So I left you last week with your homework assignment, and, uh, we've gotta go on through things. Now, as you can see, the pillars are up, right, there are three pillars that are up there. I also handed you out this document here, just so you can see, I mean, this is the basis of our strategic plan, we've gotten our pillars, clearly identified, we've, we established what the strategic goal is. You know, they're short, one, no, not even one-liners, you know, technology enhancement, you know, and then it's the objective really defines, really, the goal. That's what it is defining with. What makes it happen, though, is all the projects that we did, and all the programs. So there were eighty-five projects and, and programs that we adopted the last time we're out. The goals are all here on that second sheet, they're all laid out, so those are your strategic goals. So part of the goal tonight is, is to go through and assess, you know, are these, still, we're not gonna debate pillars, I don't believe, tell me that you don't wanna debate pillars.
That's great.
You will? Over lunch, you're here now? Okay. And then, and then, of course, there's, there's the goals themselves inside each category. Um, what we can do, we can go through these one by one and, and discuss them briefly. Uh, like, at some point, if we have anything, and it is a new goal that perhaps was not thought of, just to place those goals up here on these sheets, if there are goals that you wanna go away with, because, you know, already that's the right direction the city should be going, we can remove those as well. Uh, but as we go forward, just basically going through them and deciding what's going to remain, what's going to stay, and what is going to be added. That's really the purpose of it. You know, you have some time to think about it, you have the documents, you know, council, they're out for two years, we're instrumental in putting this together, and, uh, the new council as a whole now, it needs to confirm, let's hear it, add to or delete.
I have a suggestion for that as we go through, if you all have your homework packets in front of us with the, the color-coded, um, objectives.
Such a great packet.
You know, pretty much every, no, it's right, it's, it's in our homework from last.
Why you looking at that?
You know, when I'm looking at a goal of one point one, technology enhancement, three out of the four items are already taken care of, and we're working on the broadband, so.
That is correct.
Unless somebody has something really significant they wanna change about a green item, we probably can just quickly move on. Does that make sense? That, and then obviously, if there's a yellow or a red, you should stop and stop quite a bit, and make sure we have space to put any new work, I mean, and. So I feel like we're already done with both of them.
Is there any other technology with the council that's heard us thought of or interested?
For research, man.
Uh, so my, this is not a new thing, but, um, this obviously relates to, but it's not the right place, I mean, we're looking at, like, one-stop shop. Does anyone that, for instance, we've moved forward with a one-stop shop, has been more technology-based than location-based?
It is.
And so we're just gonna keep those buckets as they are, they're definitely overlapping.
They overlap, they do overlap, and one is a physical capital improvement, where there's big dollars involved, and the other one is lesser dollars, but significant dollars for the technology and the software. You know, so for example, I'll just explain it, if we, if we move ahead with this technology, you know, as our building inspectors go into the field, you know, they'll go in, they'll have the tablets, right, they'll have the software running inspection forms. They'll be able to get that work done in the field. It's even set up now where you can walk in the building, it automatically takes everything out of the catalog, dollars. So there's a lot of streamlining that's involved in that, there's a lot of technology. Chief is also looking at something as an alternate within this broadband program. You know, see Motorola, is it excellent?
It's more.
Yeah.
I, it's the Nitro.
No, Nigel. So, so we're looking at that as a part of the, the broadband solution, we set aside a million dollars of that we're not going to need to spend because MetroNet is paying for all of the broadband liquidity throughout the city, and they didn't ask us for money to do that. So we were really fortunate to have the case east and west of us, or south of us. So this alternative is a less expensive alternative, where we would have our own LTE system throughout the city, and achieving the same intended results, or traffic control signals and monitoring of those, as well as the security cameras throughout the city and through the parks. So we're looking at that as a project, to use those dollars as a most key aim to fiber. We could be one point seven billion, to be sure.
So what you're saying is, we, we can continue to have the technology enhancement, we're still pursuing things related to green here, appearing sort of relevant, but we don't necessarily need to move the, um, one-stop shop into this technology piece?
I don't.
And, well, and I don't know that we would need to argue about what needs to move where, but it's too much, though I think if you were determined and say, hey, maybe that one-stop shop does belong here, I think that would be a positive test. Just be based on, well, how we report, what we, the work we're doing.
So if I can translate that for my brain, you're, you're kinda, sounds like you're saying, um, because we're kind of pausing on capital improvement, on building stuff where one-stop shop would be housed, its focus is really technology at, at the moment, so.
That is true.
Well, I think, uh, yeah, there are, and they are two different things, and I think they're both a bit of a tension. So we might want to split it into two different items, just so, so that we can show progress on one while also not forgetting other.
Yeah.
But, but I also don't know, like, ten hours, doing every opportunity like that.
No, that's why, that's why you have it.
Just so good, thank you for pointing that.
So I've added the one-stop shop, which is the permitting software and everything else that we do, code enforcement and permitting, adding that here, as well as the traffic signal, security camera, which is typically what happens quite.
Okay.
Yeah. One point two.
Anybody got anything on that?
I think we're, I think we're there in terms of. You know, multi, as the conference of multi-year CIP and budget. We have a multi-year CIP and budget at the present time. Um, there's always improvements to that, right? Uh, there's new information, details available, the pavements, obviously, that's very changing, but, uh, it's going to be longer term. Uh, I'd like to leave that there, only to the standpoint that like to see us go beyond just the three years, and really look longer term on those roads. Because, you know, David and I know that, uh, you can address all the roads that fall into that terrible capital, right, that's red. But if you ignore the ones that are yellow, they're heading toward the red, there soon might be one. So it's, it's gonna be catch as catch can, so we're gonna have to balance. What we do, as we begin here's job, is to make sure that the ones that will flip next year are the ones that we attach to the list that are already deteriorating. There's a process that happens.
Does anybody in council have anything related to these three items under one point two?
Um, I.
Yes, Mr. President.
If we're talking about infrastructure, the capital improvement, C and B.
Yep.
Would it, I mean, we'd like some leeway for emergency repairs, but the new aldermen are gonna have people calling and asking, hey, my street is, you know, this street's terrible. And so, it's pretty new, but in the older parts of town, I mean, some of these streets are literally crumbling, may, maybe you guys know. Uh, but in the older parts of town, some of these streets are literally crumbling up there. Uh, we're like, I mean, very east end of Moline, that street by parties, that's, and you, you basically need to cover a wagon or something.
So you're suggesting that we make clear that emergency repair.
That could be, I'm just saying, that it could be, it's like an emergency, but.
Is anything allocated at the present time for those types of sources? Discretionary, you're looking for discretionary.
Discretionary, that's.
That is set aside specifically for emergencies, yeah.
But.
You know, this is such a climate, it's not even.
Not separately, thank you.
No, that's, that's a budgeting question.
Right, but it's related to this one that we have as, as clearly taking care of, but it's related to a broader interest in roads and infrastructure improvements.
So we would, as a council, have to come to the finance of.
Leave the case.
Leave the case.
I think it's a good idea, it would have some, there's, I think, you do always.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. President.
This is not the exact same thing, though, I, I, I agree, we need some of that flexibility, because there are things that we discover, and then we manage to address. I think we, we often do, but having a, a plan for. Um, one conversation we've often had is try to get ahead on our design, and also trying to manage what crosses over from year to year. And, and this may be, I think this comes to a budgeting question too, as far as, like, if we know that we're gonna miss, you know, twenty-five percent of profits, we're back, and I just, I'm just sorry, I don't know. I'd like to know what we think that number really is, so that we could say, like, well, we want to spend, if we wanna spend ten million dollars, or we planned for twelve. Knowing then that something will probably get delayed, or pushed back, and I, and, and then the rest can move forward, or, worst case, nothing gets delayed, and we end up just having to put pause on something that's there, and kind of how that process moves forward, it's the different optics.
That's the, that's a not biggest question. Because if you plan for it, and you can't do it, and you have to pause it, that look, right?
Well, I, I suppose, developing a.
It's overfunded, overfund, do less, but still achieve.
Well, and then maybe it's just developing that, these are the projects that we can move up quickly, that we will be working on, in case something gets delayed. Uh, it just being mindful of, I, I, and I wanna do, I wanna see it, what that would look like in a way that is helpful to our team, so that if something is getting delayed, right, we're not taking out more than we can chew, that's not what I'm after. But if, hopefully, if something falls through, we'll say, oh, well, there's a really, this one's already ready, and it was on this list of next year, but maybe it gets started.
I can tell, I can tell you that there are projects that are delayed. Uh, there are some signal projects that are delayed, one because of consultants, uh, timeliness, and then material, securing materials, now taking six months, for example, for traffic signal mess. We can't even order them because we don't know what size.
So those are the types of things, the quiet zone with delay. The F R A, we had anticipated and noticed some of your awards for France in the winter, that they're not going to announce those till summer and then they offer that it's going to take at least eighteen months for them to even take our application out of the stack. So it's the regular coordination systems.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and I think what I, I guess all I'm saying is, well, now, and I also know sometimes when it's delayed, it's still, I just stand on those work as you're keeping up, you're following up. You may not be able to take on a practical same scope, but if it's clearing us for something or clearing the, yeah, it's a, it's a question, because it's been a conversation, it's been ongoing and I feel like we finally are getting our hands wrapped around, like right with the, the uh, the reports, uh. PCI, thank you, in those, uh, not in a way that's trying to say like, gotcha, of course, things are getting delayed for all the reasons you could set out.
So it sounds to me like another one of our modifications under infrastructure and I, I'm, I'm open to staff figuring out where to plug these modifications in, like which objective, but we don't have to be that particular.
No, not tonight.
You're saying, you're saying, uh, I'm hearing from the council, we would like to adjust, address roads in multiple ways in CIP. You've got discretionary money we're interested in for emergency repairs and we want to address the um uh, money allocated versus money spent as well as any projects that are in the hopper that can be moved forward. Does that sound like what we're.
Yeah.
Okay, is that what you hear, Mr. Timian?
I can hear it sometimes.
Okay, but do you understand what we're just talking about with the CIP and roads?
Yeah.
Okay, did you have anything to add?
I did, thank you for asking, Your Honor, um, I, 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 because of the connection, I'm gonna try to keep all of one. One uh, one, so, so, um, I think that the, the housing section is great, we have a lot of plans in motion and a lot of them are booked with our current restrictions that we have. Um, the land bank and M C D C, uh, Habitat Housing Authority, we can give them land that they can't build on because our antiquated uh restrictions, so I would like to, to maybe throw a goal on here that costs us nothing, which is to uh modernize our zoning code to facilitate the growth of the pipeline.
That would go under infrastructure at this time?
No, I would be either housing likely, I mean, I could be wrong, someone else might have a better idea.
I'm in a, uh, neighborhood, yeah, zoning.
And, and I, I can talk about this at length and person a little bit better, I just, I don't want technology to hinder.
And, and we'll, we can talk more about that as a group when we get to pillar two, or when we get to these goals, two point one, et cetera.
Yeah.
Think we're working our way there, did you have anything further on roads? We covered it, okay.
Uh.
Or no?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you, yes, Mr. Smith.
Pertaining to roads, I know with the index, we had talked about maybe having an interactive map on our website where people can check out their street. It, um, just an update or how would it be in this?
Mr. Public, or G I S, do we have the ability to put the P C I index maps up somehow?
I'm sure we, we do, um.
Just a large PDF as I understand, like, no, I don't think it's interactive, um, the report is on.
Which, and the thing is, it's just great information and it's, but it's just massive, it's a huge PDF and so.
You're not printing.
Yeah, and just for the residents and. And even if we don't do it, do they, the company that did this, do they offer a, add on? Okay.
Thank you, that accessibility, you know, as we talk, I didn't hear anyone um argue with the vision statement as presented, you know, ethical, um, transparent, blah, 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 this is a really great example of how we live out that vision by translating the information we have into something accessible for public, so, thank you. All right, so that's, they're noting that as a request as it goes to an actual.
Yeah, sorry, that's a right then now, that's, that is a, a, that's a right to do it.
Um, Mr., you have something more on this one?
Just as I was flipping through, um, and I think Oliver Timian made, Oliver person Timian made uh, an excellent point about our zoning code, conversations we've really been having as we dive more deep and as our C E D department has been working through its immense backlog um, at an amazing clip, but I think it's one of those things we'd love to see. That probably does fall under infrastructure as I'm seeing here, we already have, you know, updating our comprehensive plan, updating our zoning code. Those seem like things that fall in, into that and I, maybe worth calling out to their own points that it is a higher priority, I taste that infrastructure would be the right location.
Yeah, the comprehen- the, the comprehensive plan uh is later this year. Uh, we wanted to launch the, the riverfront master plan development process first. Yeah, because that becomes a major element of the comprehensive plan along with the more base code, so what's done, what is in process of getting awarded, hopefully.
Probably, yeah, probably this time next year, we will be launching the comprehensive plan update and, and Oliver person Timian and I have talked of, at, at length about some of this concern about zoning. Ideally, it's probably a discussion that needs to be had with the community during the comprehensive plan process. Typically then you follow up with, honestly, it's probably gonna be a complete rewrite of our zoning code from agency um, after the top plan because our current top plan, while there's been updates, it was running two thousand. Pretty old for a city of our size, um, you know, you'd be going nearly twenty five years, comprehensive plans. Um, you know, one of the things we have looked at, um, and I, you can look at the map over there, that cream colors are R two and that goes anything from lots at around forty five hundred square feet all the way to five and six acres. So it just shows that it's probably too broad of a brush and I think that was one of the issues we ran into with the accessory dwelling unit conversation was trying to pigeonhole this idea into very small lots to very large lots and so there's probably some value in splitting out our zoning districts a little bit and some other items, so, so yes, I, I think, um, and I would encourage, um, that we pump the brakes a little bit on doing any major rezone or any zoning changes. Um, because as we saw during the conversation maybe used, the community is very sensitive towards, um, you know, conversations about housing residential, I'm thinking something that's gonna be better turned out during comprehensive planning processes.
Thank you for your comments, as always, we wanna be going to the community and stuff.
Oh, yes.
But could you put that on, I, I, I said two or, two or more, no, the zoning, testing something. Uh, of the.
That was one of the eight five.
It, it is, I'm, I'm thinking probably that it seems like a sub bowl, something like that, that was specifically focused on the impediments of.
We'll get to it, I'm just gonna write it down, no.
Okay, that's fine.
Safety is all in here.
So I think we're on one point three, chugging along, I did not mean to make a bad fun. But I am chugging, I'm chewing cranes, um, because I circled this yellow dot here on one point three. We had secure passenger rental service, service and quiet zones together, I noticed in your bill of goods, you separated it out and you just had the quiet zone, which I believe makes sense, I do have a short update for the council like that for today that um, Governor Pittsburgh did speak with Amtrak and um, that's what we wanted, we wanted those people at that level to be having a conversation about how to move forward, but I think that I would really like to shift our conversation about train to safety in the quiet zones that, that we've already, to just focus there because we have no control over what's gonna happen with those conversations downstate now, they, we got them to the right level, but, but it's gonna have to get worked out at that, at that uh place, so I just wanted to make a note that you all knew, that what I knew and and that shifting to safety, like I, we've asked for information about um, the safety of the uh freight that's going through our town, right, and it's such a big deal, but we unfortunately haven't been able to get that information from those that have, so it is something that I think we should continue to look at because we want, that's part of our job is to look out for safety. Mr. Smith.
Is there like records of the last time they, they get inspected or that, that kind of stuff?
There's some of that, but so, we tried three times to get the information we wanted from a report that did a study, the biggest issue is the, the safety of a bridge over the Rock River, I think it is, and, and now all the parties at the table are in agreement that this bridge is, really needs repairs. Um, in any case, we'll keep trying, our, we appear lobbyists and help us find some of that insurance.
Yes, as first, for safety, we're talking safety of what is being transported or just general safety as in like crossings?
I think the crossings is the biggest piece, it goes into quality of place as well, especially for our business owners downtown who this is a huge concern for them. I don't know if you've ever had a meeting downtown when the train is going by and, uh, you know, so it's difficult.
And residents actually, you know, um, as we develop the east end and potentially have more residential down there, this is, this will be a quality of place issue as well.
So I, I, I would say that, um, it's general safety on one hand for what's coming through our town anyway, but the quiet zones would be.
I think the notation that Bob had put up with splitting it out isn't, is where I'd like to see, because I wanna make sure the passenger round is not all out of the car. I, I recognize that there is less, we can do, and you two people have that pedal to the metal, but I think it's important to secondly that that is still remains a goal and until, and, and that we can keep that in its proper place by splitting it and not area with the other things that can move forward with more of our action.
We'll deal with that. Okay, anything else from the council on one point three ideas? Um. Bikeways are multimodal. Still, probably we're moving, so we move.
Just a question on that, uh, for Oliver, Oliver person Timian, you hear me?
Yep.
All right, great, uh, the bikeways plan and multimodal plan, I thought the intention there was to consolidate those two rather than have them separate. Are you okay with that still?
Uh.
Because multimodal encompasses all forms of transportation.
I, I, I would defer to uh professional staff on that, uh, if that is the most advantageous way to do it, then we should. If it is more efficient to do them separately, then I would trust our three miles on that.
All right, good.
Say it loudly, please.
They, they should be together, that, that's what we put through you, that's, that's Bob said, yeah, all right, bike imped is part of.
We'll come out a little bit. I think, can we also make a note of the items that we think, um, we wanna make an extra effort for either educating the public on or having conversation? I think this would be another one, based on questions I've got from some presidents, why is this sidewalk eight, eight long? You know, it's because it's now a multimodal path, um, and there's just things that people haven't seen before that are surprising and be good if we were communicating, so you have a side list going.
Good, everything going, I got it here, I got it here.
Okay. All right.
No, I missed anything, it's, it won't be here.
All right. Physical safety?
Yep.
Anyone have ideas, this area? Patients? Um, you're up, Mark.
If you know, I'm not a big fan of fireworks. I think it's even called fireworks because they're basically low grade explosions that happen from about, I think I heard some before recently, uh, and I know that it's, you know, it's such a thing that's, it's so ubiquitous, it's kind of unenforceable, but I think in, in, in places in the west where they don't get a lot of rain and scribe, it's actually a fire hazard. Uh, I think they have, have to have a licensing. Use, use fireworks, period. Uh, that's something the council would be, I mean, as far as code, I know it's illegal, but just to shoot fireworks, I think the fourth of July is the only day you're allowed legally to shoot them off.
We know what our, what our ordinance says, Margaret, hey, I mean, Margaret, the change.
They're not legal.
It's never.
Oh, they shouldn't.
Right, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, some of the, the, the real problem with our, our neighbors that have a supply. I hear that, that's part of the problem. I think alternatively you could look at raising fines, try to make it so expensive, if we do catch some money, they'll, they'll probably start to re-pack, an alternative strategy.
Mr. Smith.
I, I understand that, that shared many of Oliverman O'Brien's uh concerns, in fact, I often evacuate my children from the city around the Fourth of July because, um, of fears of fireworks. Um, and so they have to go out to, to a place in the country, but, um, I, I also think that we would, we run into concerns of um, how could we even build something that's gonna be functional? And it's, you know, there is a certain level of that, um, the consent to move that through and that has to be part of that conversation of not just, I mean, changing the law, but how would we can probably get people to buy into whatever changes we were bringing, I mean. Um, without the, you know, the consent of the government, enforcement will just be, you know, a game of.
Well, I, I realize that, I'm saying that, I realize that.
I think, I think with Mr. Brian, acknowledge your concern, it's the kind of thing that you could bring through council on your home if you wanted to update something, it's put into a vote in the council, but in terms of.
The ordinance in that.
In, in, yeah, in terms of a strategic plan on safety, I, it just feels a little more specific than we need to be on the strategic.
Sure, absolutely, but physical safety is probably under quality of place, actually. It's, it's not quality of place when you drive.
Yeah, it, it, it is a problem that has gotten unaddressed in all the years I've been doing this, it's never been solved. It's never going to get solved, just like saying, smoking is banned, alcohol banned, people will find a way, right? Because it's available, they can access it, that's where the issue is, so it's legal to shoot fireworks in Iowa, it's legal to buy that in Iowa. If you're on the border, you definitely close the bridge, just, you know, a week in advance.
Right, I, I just brought it up, I know it's, it's hard to enforce, I know the, you know, the police and fire, they get calls and calls and calls and by the time they get there, of course, persons, all that, they just expect, like, you still have to pay bills and contracts.
That's the reality.
That, that's the only specific.
Okay, point taken, I think Mr. from I know you can work those things through, um, agenda. Um, we're at one point five, flexible codes and innovative tools.
Yep.
Oh, there's the update zoning code right there.
Yep. Now, that update the zoning code, I mean, we, we did it in part with form based code, there are no urgent plans to do any sort of updating as I understand.
I mean, we're doing that off and security in our sign and give it to you at party, but, but yeah, we're gonna kind of.
But a comprehensive rezoning, just so councils are aware of this, only happens once a comprehensive plan is done. It is a process that we have tested, that's true, so that's what we would do, so it's gonna be at least here and a half.
So it sounds like, you know, point taken from Mr. Timian.
Yeah.
Uh, it's remains in here under the green.
Yeah.
As, and partnered with.
Plan, we have this plan number one, so the code is number two, other than minor events that have.
Anything further from the council on flexible codes and innovative? Yes, Mr. Smith.
Question, have, have we seen the tree bank policy?
Uh, it is, uh, I don't know, it's upcoming. Uh, good, uh, so we are currently working on a tree management plan that will address the tree bank policy a little bit, so they just did, we had an inventory, wasn't quite, um, nearly as extensive, so they came down, actually did, uh, finished our inventory. So they just did, we had an inventory, wasn't quite, um, nearly as extensive, so they came down, actually did, uh, finished our inventory. And then they're working on the plan, uh, our goal is to have the plan done middle to late June and then start working on the the tree bank policy. And now we'll have to update some of those pencils on.
Okay.
So that's a task that is preceding the actual plan, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's our plan.
Okay, so we can flip, oh, we have our first red dot. One point six.
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Well, I know Rod, I had discussed some of this, um, with Rod via different conversation about native plants in residence yards. That's something someone has come to me wondering about, um, so in gathering information, I got an update from Mr. Schiff. But I wonder if he might just summarize the kind of thing you told me of why the recommendation is to, from staff is to scrap this particular.
Right, well, I wouldn't say scrap, I would say that it's kind of part of the head of the board, so real quick, my background. I went to Northern Illinois University, I was a junior biologist, was a college in natural research and animal. During college and and at at college, I worked for the Nature Conservancy at the Natchez Grasslands, doing prairie restoration, we're doing actual prairie installation. At that time, it was only three thousand acres to preserve, and it's now a little over four thousand acres since there, in Franklin Grove, Illinois, wonderful place, they have bison there. Uh, but essentially, um, over the 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 twenty plus years that I've been here, we have tried, uh, multiple practices to do natural area of landlings. Whether that was one prairie. They're gone, they're right, whether that was prairie insulation to a rain guard train, it's been differently. Unfortunately, we failed because we never had a plan of maintenance site. And it's it's a situation where, uh, public has an idea of of what, uh, you know, native flowers or or pretty woodland flowers looks like. And that may not coincide with what actual prairie looks like, and so if you you just have a lot of different perceptions and, you know, it's 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 not everyone's cup of tea. And so they fail, like as I said, and so as far as the plantings and things that that residents who do, it's very challenging. Because neighbors are going to report neighbors or unkempt, uh, lawns and and gardens and things and and then that thumps, uh, then back to our our inspection folks. Where our neighbor in Port, human officer has to go out, make a judgment call on whether this is a weed patch or is it truly have some native, uh, flowers or plants within that. And so it requires a technical expertise that is beyond staff's capabilities. Uh, so that's that's a big, big part of that, and so as far as, like I said, it's not scrapping, it's it's really, if the council wants to to pursue this. That's what we would have to really sort of be looking at is adding that expertise and people that would be devoted to to that, um, that craft. Because that's what it truly is, and being out front and doing the, uh, public relations side, educating the the public on on this front before we just turn it over. Because we, like I said, I think I think you're on showing dozens of of locations where we attempted and failed.
Go ahead, Mr. Mark.
So what you're saying is, in neighborhood yards, it's going to be very difficult to implement anything. It's it's more, I guess, if if it's going to succeed, it's it would have to be in a park that's already partially wooded or.
We've even tried that, so it's and and again, it's failed because the the people think that you can just put it in a native, I haven't, and you don't have to do anything ever again. Um, it takes a a serious investment of time and resources to to really fully propagate that into a truly established. And. That's an area that has to continue to have some longevity to it. Of resources, so I'll get, don't have that expertise, those resources, so that would be, you know, then back to councils to to what we would get.
The county has some expertise on, so, I mean, the forest preserve is a thing, pretty prevalent about native grasses.
That's that's what they do, we 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 have parks, we, um, right now, they're they're dealing flood. And so this is a, this is a prime time to be out, um, herbiciding, uh, you're you're a basic species, and they, before they start to take root. And begin to begin to push out the the native plants, um, I I can't, I don't have anybody to do that right now. Um, so if we had a prairie planting or native planting or something like that, it's that's, again, that's why it's it's it hasn't been successful. Because we are tasked with those other responsibilities that the Forest Alert Districts and other. Like, again, at the Nature Conservancy, at the Nature Conservancy, if the trees are grassed, it's all good, those are our only focus was was that and.
Mr. Schmidt.
I I think the explanation makes a lot of sense and and I I also believe this is something we keep on our priority list. I'm finding it maybe a more on hold, more slower developing piece, but I think it's something we need to consider for. Those small type installations, bringing into parks, how we're how we're going to, uh, and and also as opportunities for using that for actually, you know, part of the water management. And how we keep that retained and keep people safe, but if we can't have the expertise on hand, I recognize, we don't want it set to fail. I wonder if we could, as the next step consider, would the county be able, that's something we could ask the county in a partnership. You know, we could pay for the county to, who has that expertise or, you know, as a new way to think about that. Um, because recognizing too that if we put that on, we train up one person, and then that one person leaves, it may leave us in a high and dry place. For a really specialized skill set that we may be able to, in partnership for.
And this council's been pretty, uh, conservative with budgeting for new, um, staff lines in this last year. I don't know that the economic, um, conditions have changed, so to to change that perspective, although you could all disagree come October. But I would suggest along those lines, forward this into the investigate environmental best practice opportunities. That that is actually the umbrella that something like this goes under, and then we can try to see if we can partner with nonprofits. Living Lives in Water, some of the forest preserve, I don't know, but the partnership idea might be a way to make something actually happen along those lines. And and I am thinking, just so the council knows, and I just mentioned it to Mr. O'Brien, that because there is citizen or resident interest in these types of. Um, objectives, right, they want to be good stewards of the environment, this is a perfect place for them to be a part of advisory councils that spend up to a hundred and twenty days. Studying an issue, making connections, making a recommendation to the mayor's office, and I can bring it to council, all those kinds of things. That I, that's the way I'm kind of considering, might be the smartest way to 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 not send it packing, but to be realistic about our dollars and our time. And and actually get the public involved. Mr. Schmidt.
I I I do not support collapsing it in under, I think it is a a larger item, and I think under that steward our environment. All of these can be collapsed down under, in this, environmental best practices, I think, and that that just is too catch all for me, I think. If there's a specific need and that long term, we're going to set ourselves up for it. I recognize we can't move quickly enough for all reasons, I have stated, but I I'd be very hesitant to let it go.
Okay, well, if we're doing sure, let's all need some things, is that what the plan is?
Yep.
Then we'll see where everybody falls on that idea, either keeping it in the forefront or pulling it in. Yes, sorry, Mark.
And I would suggest, right, that we're not looking to like plan, we're we're going to start out smaller, because I would assume. Uh, when we work with the the county or whoever we work with, and we need to pick out an area that we can monitor and will be checked on regularly. And even do some of the volunteers that we have for parks, I mean, if if we're serious about this, we want to do it, we need to get some volunteers. And work with unions, of course, but I would say that we need to have, this is something, we got a lot of retirees in our community. And it needs to be various, I I think, kind of specific to each park, you know, not all parks are going to be set up to that type of thing. But like, say McKinley School area, uh, that would be a good place to, if that would become part of the Parks Department, that'd be a good place to start some natural plantings and have it. You know, monitored, uh, if we do pay the county to come in or whatever, so that's why.
Is this something that keep holding beautiful that you had up could be a part of?
I I think that would probably be a really good place to to put it, because I think the biggest thing is is the education. And 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 that's what we did is keep holding beautiful initially, most of the education on recycling for months and months and months and months before we even started the curbside recycling program. That's where that's where that all, that's key, that's where holding beautiful started. I mean, it's so similar to me with this, it's it's one of those things where, yeah, you have to do that, you have to educate, you have to let people know.
Okay. Yes.
Just one more thought on this area, I know that, you know, six hundred acres was.
Over seven.
Over seven, that counts cemeteries too.
Yeah, the cemeteries.
It's hard out of the cemeteries, you have a lot of those, right, so, you know, the issue is, is if we're talking about doing this, you know, is it a part of the part of the master plan? Because I don't think the current master plan has anything in it relative to the topic of natural parity plans, opportunities.
Correct, right.
So properly placed, if you're going to do this in parks, it needs to be brought up as a part of that discussion with the department.
Okay.
Because that's really where the responsibility rests.
If it if it survives tonight, I think.
If it survives tonight, not to not to stick you with it.
I would say they do have, some of them have negative feedback, because we've done it at Green Valley, we've done it at Prospect. Um, and when this first got added, I reached out to the friends of Riverside Garden, the, um, IDNR and the county. And we talked about maybe doing some small plots down, uh, in the Green Valley area where, um, by the dog park, by Green Valley, by soccer. And, uh, so a lot of citizens, they just think it's weeds, and they they get upset at us when the grass is four, five inches long or something. So I didn't, I, so that's kind of the background on some of the information that we've received so far. And, you know, over time, they just just haven't been successful.
Okay, that's helpful information.
Yeah, I got it, I got it up there, we'll go later.
Moving on, more colors, one point one, we're in the two's now. Anybody have thoughts? Updates?
A lot of dots on this. I mean, if you take, if you take a look at what's what's, you know, you've got the small videos, don't fictional land bank, that's done. And then annual business building inspection, right? You've got that up, so if you come through here, and you look at what's still going on, you have to make property registration, neighborhood project. React reactivity neighborhood groups, and then the single, all the rental housing inspection, you've got two positions left right from the budget, one of which was built. And the other one is still vacant, maybe, but we have a program. All fall under the umbrella of housing, right, neighborhood enhancement, it's all part of that, housing issue that we saw. But if you pull those away, you know, the yellow one, the crime-free housing, that's a part of the housing as well, and code enforcement, so. I think, you know, as you have a, the goal should be broad, right? And these are, these are the initiatives to make that goal happen, right, the projects and programs are initiatives. So we need to, you know, they need to survive, if we're going to have a housing, full loan housing program. And then we need to figure out how we're going to fund that next year, because that's an annual recurring cost, it's not a one-time cost. Once we make that commitment, we bring those people on board, they're going to be working on that for decades long, but they'll still be working on it, that's how big the city is.
What I see a commonality here through all of this is is that if you look back at the reasons there are behind on these goals, it's all staffing dollars. Right, it's to end the program then to to implement, so. I don't know, it sounds to me like a repackaging of these, the housing thing, um, is relevant, I don't know. Whether people think. Yeah, that's right. Repackaged all house, I don't know if you can see that, Mr. Timian, repackaged all housing needed programs.
Yep, they're not even projects, they're programs, each one of those is an independent program under the umbrella, right, each one is bespoke, but we have. You know, and that's one of the things that we've talked about, and, uh, I think it was six hundred, anywhere five hundred to six fifty. Let's be honest, I mean, those numbers were somewhat inflated, I saw, but it's going to be half a million dollars to actually put this program in place properly. So that we can get, like the roads, get ahead of the curve as opposed to, you know.
Yeah. Mr. Hope.
I think it would be worth having a discussion if we want to continue the crime-free housing program, uh, that has not been attainable, uh, so I can't even tell you it's successful. But.
Is it measurable?
Well, it potentially could be, not right now, but it might be a way to streamline that as well and refocus energy.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I I think as part of repacking of this, and it does come back to where we have started to view them as not these individual pieces, but one large. Crime-free houses, I think very much a part of that, looking at what parts have been successful or possible versus what parts are now, and what parts are maybe unaligned with what we need to do anymore. Um, but I think that's said to all of them, right beyond the conversation about certification of landlords or licensing versus what's going to be what makes the most sense. And we've seen a lot of that information, but we just need to keep working through it, I think, through the plans that are coming forth from our staff and what they're able to learn and present to us so we can make those decisions.
I think the, one of the unspoken goals or things that are outcomes of what we'll do when we share up with these these thoughts tonight. Will be, will be which items, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but which items under what we're revising actually rise to the top, right? Things that the most, the ones that are going to be perceived as the most important.
Right, the top priorities to the.
Top priorities, and in that sense, I think we've already made mention as a council or or through our, um, presentations about housing, et cetera. And knowing the dollars that we need to find in the budget, it's especially, that that's already a priority, right? I've spoken with many of you about about that idea, and then you did spend a good time talking about roads and CIP as probably another one. But we'll wait and see, I'll put that all out, but it might correct on that's how this will.
Yep, I think two point one is that it's not this nut and crap right now, because it's a whole stage of life. It really is, I mean, how they may get along with the challenge, I should, I don't think there's anybody in the world who is really a housing expert. You know, who's had a career of just doing just housing, and I think therein lies a challenge, that's a challenge in the land bank, right? People kick it around, but there's nobody who really does it. Um, the plus thing, we have an expert locally is probably is John Foe. I mean, his whole career is all housing, it's not just public housing, it's housing, so that's his world that he kind of moves in. You know, we need people like that oversee all of us to ensure it's a nation, you know, so that you have measurable, meaningful plans and results you can actually.
Yes.
Has there been any, uh, benchmarking of communities that have what we think we want, or in the direction we want to go? That that we tried that, has anybody?
Not to my knowledge.
Maybe that's a place to start, that we don't have to, you know, start at the very beginning, maybe we can build on something someone else already has.
I mean, if money was no object, King would have turned your place upside down.
Right.
But there's just not enough money to do it, I think one of the best examples of that was, you know, Mayor Ford with Urban Land Institute. Former mayor of Pittsburgh visited, right, Mayor Murphy, I say Ford, I always confuse him with that guy in Canada. So anyhow, you know, when he was here, you know, and had the opportunity on his, on his first trip here, he did everything remotely when they did the U L I plan. So he actually, when he was here a few months ago, physically showed up with his team of experts, and and there were housing experts there, right? And as an elected official, he spent eight years, two terms, focused on housing because half the city fell, he left. They left behind houses like these, you know, in this age, and they started to deteriorate, the neighborhood started to deteriorate. He made it his entire focus for eight years, and they brought it back for homes that were worthless, you know, that was now selling for over five hundred thousand. Of course, it's Pittsburgh, different kind of place, major city, but the reality is, is, you know, his five hundred is R two fifty, right? So, you know, you need that kind of expertise and he has those programs and he's committed to educating us as much as necessary.
Yeah, I mean, the takeaway there is we have resources we can go to, so I like that idea. Scaling it down to the little inside, but learning from others. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, so two point two.
Yes.
Number three. The library multicultural program, we've already talked about that this evening, I think, didn't you?
So, yeah.
You're building up the private.
Yeah, well, that is, uh, it's. We're building expansion of of materials, of the languages spoken by the students in the school district. Unfortunately, that is a um, it's funded by the Yip, from the Bartlett Family Foundation and uh. Uh, it's a little bit behind because we had, we have about four thousand dollars left to spend that, originally four thousand dollars, yeah. We just had trouble finding um materials, languages to to obtain, and we're in more trouble sometimes. So, we're close.
Well, it sounds to me then that that doesn't need to go anywhere, you're actively working on it, it should probably move to the green, move to a green dot.
It's on track, you would say, right?
The goal was to have it done last year, by the end of last year, so we're just a little bit, right, but we'll be done. Can I ask a question?
Um, is the goal to get so many books in different languages or what is the main goal?
Yeah, the goal is just to have, just of all the different languages available for bar.
Okay, so there's not a component of outreach to get people who speak those languages.
This is really collection driven.
It's a collection, okay, thank you.
Mr. Hirschman.
Simple question, hardcover, softcover versus electronic?
Is we have electronic as well as hardcover, softcover, we have kits and we have English language learning materials too, so we're we're really trying to. Offer a lot of different things in there.
There's just so much being read electronically anymore, that's why I mean, wonderful, now you check that out.
Um, I would say one of the dots on here that I've thought quite a bit about recently is the Public Art and Place Making Program. You know, fondly remembering Alderperson Waldron's derision that we don't have a project going. Spoken with some members of the Public Art Commission and they're excited about the options, there may be some. Um, things we need to go back and look at in the ordinance, but if we're really going to make this a city with a character. That people from all over want to come and be a part of things, we have to have some character. And public art will help us do that, so I would like to see a reinvigoration of that, I know we had to pull back on dollars just last year completely. Yes, we did we did decrease their funding for this this budget here, um, but. I just wanted to put out there that I think it's a valuable program for a city that's on the move and we need to really support them and get stuff going.
Well, I had some interesting conversations with a very infamous demo club. Almost two years ago and they are working together. They're motivation and public art, at least they were in the last emails last week.
That's what I was discussing yesterday.
That's it?
It was discussed yesterday at HPC, so they're they're very excited to work together.
So, they're still working.
Yeah, this is not, a historic mural on a clock. Is is a monument, it's not public art the way we envision public art through our murals on actual pieces of art. Murals on buildings, on the streets with lighting, it's not, it's just not the same. So, I I'm happy that they're having conversations between these two groups, potentially can share funds, but I think if you talk to some of the members of of the other commission. There's a real concern about how money will be spent and what their and what their um goals really are. But my point here tonight is to to say, I think we need to be really helping public art make a difference in the character of the town.
That's, I was just going to mention that, um, I agree that the public art is um something we need to keep on there, um, I think it's just. That's social media um opportunities as well, just to get those art pieces out there and having people come down and Instagramming or TikToking. Well, that it's just, it's free, it's free um publicity, so I think that um it just makes a city beautiful and makes people want to come and see, you know, what it is.
Yes, Mr. Seas.
Just one after one, um, Instagrammable.
Instagrammable, is that the word I was looking for?
Yes, and just like to buke, people downtown and arts everywhere and it just lightens up the whole city. And we got plenty of walls around here that aren't, don't look great, but yeah, a reimagining of the program, um, I think.
I would just caution one notch, is that we have buildings downtown, a lot of walls, some of the walls are protected walls. So, you have to find a balance and you have to navigate the historic water with the mod the modern future. You know, and and it's not an easy task. So, I'm just putting that out there that, yeah, the city of murals is great, but not on historic buildings.
And I think the view kind of have that right balance, um, because some of that art does have some of the history, but if you look at it, it looks a little more modern. But it tells the story of those uh from the view of the the, but I I don't, I couldn't tell you who they are, but it does have some historical aspects. And not all of them, but some of them do.
I wrote it down, go take a drive.
Um. So, I don't think that's a reimagining of anything, it's just I think.
No, yeah.
So, we moved to two point three. Uh, I see another red bat. What else are you all thinking about?
Particular building, apps at the base, you know, be, where they maximize every space stuff. We're shifting people again, it's become like getting a carousel in here, I think, for some people, right? But, you know, we're re we're redoing the room that was the law library, we're going to move people into there. Spend a little bit of money for some furniture, desks, but we have to move people in there, we don't have meeting space. Right, which is a problem, you know, we don't meet just at night, we meet all day long. So, people compete for this room, they're sometimes forced into the chamber, they're down behind secure obscure areas inside HR where they don't belong, frankly. You know, and then, I even caught people in the back who were here the other day, I mean. So, you know, the one-stop shop was a part of that, moving people out, you know, moving people over here. Getting finance where it belongs, back in city hall as opposed to at a fire station, that's a first for me. You know, and trying to figure out how we're going to get that done, you know, there's no money budgeted right now for the basement, I think that's fair. Put that money, also we got money out, put the money out of the re reimagining the space at Public Works upstairs. You know, basically it's nothing more than useful office space that's used for engineering, storage, right? Documents that frankly should be digitized and then disposed of and maintained on a database somewhere in the cloud. And then that space becomes usable, oysters work quick, you just store a bunch of paper in this type of place. So, we have plans and we can revisit those at some point, because I'm out of, officially I'm out of.
I. I completely understand that. I, but knowing the buckets of dollars, I personally asked y'all to find, waiting to see what the rest of the council wants to find. I feel like, excuse me. The taking up those spaces and is a temporary inconvenience for the privilege of actually getting something accomplished on our. Our massive road backlog and housing project, I just. I don't see us moving into a physical space personally at this time. Making that a priority. I'm so sorry. Mr. Seas.
Um, thank you, uh, myself, I I remember we talked about this, I I think it's important to have a nice city hall with a basement that doesn't have mold. And it it has some potential health hazard, so it just. For the sake of safety down there, one, but also, um, you know, to attract entertainment, um, you do want to have some nice facilities. Um, I I I guess I just think it's also a retention tool, because people want to go to their nice offices and and whatnot, so. Um, so that's just my thought.
Mr. Hirschman.
I do think too that, um, even in finding a short-term solution, it needs to be a. Uh, meeting space can become hugely detrimental to an office, which when it's not available, um. And while I I I agree, I don't know that we have can in the short term, but with a long-term solution. Um, I think if there is a smaller ways to to phase that in or to make steps so that go forward. Because that's also going to tie directly into. Fire station. And as that goes, obviously, we can't kick this much further down the road than when the fire station is rebuilt, unless we're going to build a finance office into that as well.
That is correct.
Um, so I think there's there's a recognition of of. While it's not the kind of thing I want to dive into and save us all our money, add if there are some of the short-term alternatives, ways we can alleviate that need. Because I think that's going to be important for employee retention as well, particularly the moving space issue and um and knowing that we're going to have to time that on our station.
Yeah, um, fire station is is the big one. No question about it, I would put that first, I would put the one-stop shop second, keep in mind, we didn't know if that fire department was. Right, so that that was, but the power is revealed. Right, big difference, it's a little sheep bag on that one, it's like, whoa, brakes, we have the brakes, so, okay, I just want to explore alternatives.
Any else on this objective? It's not, all right. The gun unit is the yellow, I'm kind of confused, I think I've, I have written a note to myself, this is complete, we have a gun unit.
Staffing issue.
Yeah, staffing it.
That's pretty much it. Anything about the accreditation, well, we have.
All right, yeah, we could be getting our. See the accreditation in March. Your honor, if that's an agency, just uh, give a presentation about what we're working on.
Great.
It's a huge compliment for the chief, his team that worked on it is a huge accomplishment. Because it means that they stand, have shoulders above those working high, meaning that they have a policy in place, see. Provide for proper, proper community places, by the way.
Yeah, we we began the process for the next phase, the tier two, upon.
Living documents.
Yep.
Kudos to the chief.
Under it, because there's so few under this and some of them are getting accomplished, that this gets rolled into the mission. Mission services, what what our mission are. Anything else from the council on that one? Okay, moving on, two point five. I was curious. Which one, the yellow? Yeah. Enhance Mobile Crisis Response System program is the one that's behind on that. And I know we had an on, it says on track on the Downtown Farmers Market program, but I'm kind of curious about that. Given that we're still putting Riverfront Development Plans in progress and how Mr. Timmy feels about that objective at this stage versus two years ago, I know that's his.
Which is big.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
Yeah, so we've had some discussions with some of our community partners, um, and had some difficulty in in finding that, so I. You know, as well as finding a location. Uh, farmers market is uh, it's a pretty saturated market in the Quad Cities, we've got a major one across the river. Uh, some of our smaller communities also do farmers markets, um, I think it's something um we're still very interested in, but. Um, you know, Mercado kind of took some of that idea with it. Um, so again, I think we're we're still looking for that, but I think at this point, that's either on hold or. That may get wrapped into conversations in the Riverfront Land, do we have some sort of. Space or something. So, so we should, you know, we're hoping to get one up and running this year and also our conversations we have.
So, is that that's something that you think you should stay? Yes, Mr. Seas.
Thank you, I I think at some point, we're going to need something, not necessarily a farmer's market exactly like uh. Like Mercado or even Davenport, but something, uh, I know Mercado's already got a waiting list of people who can't get in there because they're limited by the space, so. Um, the the demand will probably just stay, stay there and they might end up going somewhere else. And hopefully, you know, we'll have our neighbors to either side, start one and anticipate some of those. Vendors, so just wanted to put put that out there.
Mr. Schmidt.
Well, there is one in Rock Island downtown, um, I'm not totally sure what that schedule is, but I mean, obviously, by that into.
Other programming also has has one, it's it's more down by the avenue, but they do have.
Well, I'm wondering, yes, go ahead, Mr. Timmy.
Thank you, I apologize, this this microphone picks up the train sound really well, but not people's voices, so I've been hearing a lot. Food and cars and trains, and I'm assuming you all aren't saying those things, but, um. I I, you know, I I did advocate for farmers markets originally, um, I did have a different idea recently, which I did speak to Ryan about. The idea of utilizing some of our community parks for for local, smaller farmers markets. Because the idea here is we're trying to give food to people, not create a really big maker seller state. And so, uh, neighborhood markets, and and this has been done successfully in a number of cities before. It would require coordination and all of that, so this is just an idea, I don't know how viable it is.
Neighborhood markets.
It's not to be down loud, it's by far, not everyone can get downtown.
Yeah, well, I guess it brings me back to this idea of being super specific and maybe we need to stay at a broader level of. You know, KJ just explained today how they're investing CDVG money in food and food insecurity, I feel like. Food insecurity as addressing that as a whole, rather than such a specific goal, I mean, that could be part of the conversation. Because you're individually interested in, and anybody else that had other ideas, but maybe we modify this to, what did I say?
Food insecurity.
Food insecurity, addressing that piece, so that our public is healthy and et cetera.
Yes, I mean. A great example, you know, we're we're slated for potentially four hundred housing units downtown, we don't really have a grocery store, I mean, we have we have heritage. Um, that is, that's one thing I keep hearing from folks is, we really need a grocery store downtown, and so, um. Yeah, I mean, I think this can become a maybe a labor or energy kind of policy in our position.
Yeah, so maybe change that to food housing. It's food insecurity as food deserts, et cetera, that is all wrapped in, that's why I like your idea of of food housing.
We do.
Anybody else on on, anything else here?
There are.
Yes, please.
So, you brought up mobile crisis response and and then you also talked about, you know, looking at it from a different lens, it's too specific. Mobile crisis response is not going to happen at a Moline level, uh, we we are deeply involved with the regional. So, when we established that goal prior to the CESA Act, which is now a statewide act. Uh, so we're, I mean, it does consume a lot of our time and we're working on that, uh, but it's going to be a regional approach. Um, you know, I I I would rather maybe focus us on expanding our partnership with CYFS. Or if you wanted to view it from a larger level of supporting mental health services uh in the region. And then those other things could fall underneath of it, I think that would be more appropriate, because I mean, even things that you and I have done in Buster, trying to work on. I mean, I mean, it's it's many layers deep in this problem.
So, your your chief is suggesting rolling things together, ta- taking this out completely because it's not in Moline's. So your your chief is suggesting rolling things together, ta- taking this out completely because it's not in Moline's specific program, it's a state program.
Correct.
Right, but it's still, you still have efforts toward addressing mental health, um, needs in the community as a priority.
Yeah, so when 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 I put that in originally, we had talked about creating our own, it was a concept called the Green Andes. We were actually gonna have our own program here. That's gonna happen, it's it it is being provided by Robert Young now, there is mobile crisis response, but we're working on the risk matrix right now for the regional response plan, uh, but it's gonna be run out of the hospital and by Robert Young, so it's not really something that we need to track, uh, you know, I think it is part of our larger, uh, goal of supporting and improving the mental health services and their access for our citizens, and I think that could continue to be part of police and fires, uh, lead, but I I don't know that it's really worded correctly the way we have it drilled down that far right now.
That's great, I I just wrote down what how you summarized it is how I'm thinking of a a dot taking over these items. If if the council agrees, supporting and improving mental health access. What was that?
Yeah, that's why I have services, I mean, it's, yeah.
And health services, that's a better word.
I mean, it's it's multifaceted.
Okay, does that make sense to everyone? Bob, do you understand that?
I do, I just, I recognize, oh, this is the lack of people who would provide the service in this area too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I've heard that at that luncheon, and you can put it up here, but until they solve their problem, I don't know how we can do things here more, other than letting support them somehow in some fashion. I'm not sure what that support is.
Yeah, we we work, we're working on some things, uh, education-wise, uh, you know, trying to get people into the program, having our own social workers. You know, contracting with CYFS, that doesn't cost us any money, I'd be able to enhance that program. Uh, you know, we've divided three thousand referrals to that program, so I mean, I think there's some things that we can do that are meaningful from a city aspect. I just don't think it's worded correctly right now, but we want to attain it the way it's it's articulated right now.
Yeah, the measurable nature of something like supporting and improving mental health services, Bob.
Rework the goal.
Yeah, rework that goal.
We're not, we're not gonna work it out right here.
No, I understand that.
I I just, it's a kind of flex question, so we're gonna have to put our heads.
Does that make sense? Did you have your hand up?
No, but I I I think it's a wise goal, it's gonna be a constantly moving target and that thing that we need to be doing what we can do, and when we reach a roadblock, I give them the flexibility to keep moving.
Anything else from anyone on hold to council words? Right, quality control. Yeah? We're all good?
Yep.
Yes, let's catch them.
Um, so we're, uh, not creating a rental housing coordinator position, does that not go with the whole housing?
It does.
Falling place, so should that be neutered, or is that, or is it kind of like a double?
Yeah.
Yeah, we work housing.
Yeah, everything in here, you know, take a look at it, these are all part of housing under quality. So two point six needs to be merged back in with I think two point one. So, erase that here.
Okay, is that what you want to say? I get to see that in text.
Two point one.
Anything else on that one? Good point. Not remove the talent attraction and that's all blue.
Moving on.
Well, we we are working on the film for police and fire that the council authorized on a thousand dollar part. Um, and that is coming along, I don't know what the timeline for releases, but they're sure, and there'll be some great stars created.
Yeah, they shot the fire last week and police, uh, believe it's next week. This, their video.
You shot video, you shot video of firefighting.
We've seen a couple releases of, uh, some clips and they could plan and get them out next week.
Yeah, so from a recruitment standpoint, all those things we're doing for talent attraction are working. We have how many applicants? Not that they're all qualified, but how many applicants so far have provided, they're all qualified here.
More than forty.
More than forty.
Wow.
Wow. That's measurable change.
Loosen. Loosen the restrictions and they will come. Loosen the zoning and they will build.
I sure think.
He's not smiling, is he, the way?
Alright, well, I think to me, this kind of is another example of like, we have fulfilled these objectives, but it's not like we want to stop thinking about talent attraction and, you know, what kind of workplace environment we have, so like, I don't know how you wanna repackage that as a, maybe as a value versus a goal. Does that make sense?
It maybe help, I mean, there's always the need to work on recruitment strategies because times change, right? You had the pre-pandemic strategies, those didn't work during the pandemic, then you have the post-pandemic, which is a whole new world, right? It's a totally different world, and you know, and eventually, a year or two will melt, it might be different again. I might go back from a pre-pandemic, people are bad enough, that everybody has to be in their own place. You know, at least certain issues.
And I wonder if, like, moving to a thought to our intelligent attraction intention would make sense. You know, I don't at this point have strong goals, I think, you know, I think we set out and then we decide what these roles meant. But I also think it might be appropriate to just go back and look and say, okay, what is the next level of what that needs to be? And I don't know that council, like, to me, all these goals could continue to be worked on, maybe less on the internship. But I I think we might, it might just be a matter of, these remain the goals we accomplished when we set out to do, and now we should just revisit. Okay, what's, what does that look like next? And how that comes, because I don't necessarily think the goals are out of alignment with where we want to be in the future.
Comes a management policy.
Yeah, and it becomes now we can move on to that next phase.
That's a management policy, some of these things have migrated to that point now.
And some of the things like what we just did with the, um, mental health services would make that a similar goal, that we can set certain identifiable things underneath. It may turn blue, but then we can say, okay, well, next.
Yeah, because you know, it can turn blue, then a year later, it can go down, go downhill real quick, if it's not being done anymore. So some of these things need to continue to be done, become part of, be part of mental programs, so.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Smith.
Uh, just one point, uh, with that, uh, uh, to me, the talent attraction too is making sure that we're uh, advertising and promoting these, uh, with organizations that help us recruit diverse, uh, talent that can reflect our community. Uh, and I do wanna commend you because, um, I know the Greater Quad Cities Suspended Chamber of Commerce newsletter, uh, the positions are getting there, so uh, kudos, uh, for that, uh, but I know, uh, Lulac, I I get these all the time, there is a HR, and you might know Circa. Uh, there's a service provider, but they have a multicultural, um, it does upsell you to target specific individuals of diverse backgrounds. So, uh, we just started to utilize that at my work rate, but those are the kind of tactics that I guess I could see this kind of falling into.
Sure, those ones.
Yeah, so, uh.
Well, sure does.
Getting close here, um, three, three point two, we're investing community in economic development.
Well, yeah, this is really, this is really busy. The good news is, is we we can't be going off, announce every decision that gets hired, but CED was one of those decimated departments two years ago, you know, and now it's back and it's stronger than it probably was. You know, and it's more like mercy than it probably was back then. So we have a new assistant director starting that Monday, and then we can get it all. Perfect, we're a project coordinator as well, so, things are good, we're only down one, won't you? Just one.
Mr. Schmidt.
Let's take it. The, uh, I I was hoping we could touch a little bit on the evaluating downtown parklets programs. I just wanted a little more clarity on that, because I also know that at one point that was something that was going on to the Main Street Commission's agenda. And whether it still is being, there's been a lot of changes, I'm just curious for how that is.
You wanna address all those?
I have, I think they sorted that last time. Yes, we did, so that was a primary department that, so the, the newer council members, parklets came out, uh, as an idea of it under, uh, who were mayor and Avery, uh, had a negative order, which actually ironically expires on Thursday, uh, when the Illinois and the federal, uh, expire. Um, we are going to keep the parklets program running through this season, um, same with our outdoor dining, we've put relaxed restrictions on it. Uh, coming next fall, at this appointed fall, we will revisit the whole program, whole idea, because there is some expense of taking the parklets down, bringing them up, um, we've had some businesses, uh, I don't know the parklet, there's a lot of departments who are up early, um, so we're gonna revisit that entire conversation. We've had great response, the the businesses like it, the the residents really enjoy it, park this as well. Um, and so I think we will revisit that, Main Street Commission will be a part of that, the Moline Center, uh, manager will be a part of that. All the works director, you know, everybody will, uh, and we are gonna come together with kind of a comprehensive policy. In the off-season, but again, kind of see this season as really the first post, postseason, and so I don't know, letting programs kind of roll, and then we'll revisit that some time.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna explain something you're gonna wear, but I just, because I know there was the part, the the outside, outdoor eating rules that council had voted and then reaffirmed a vote to take out uh, commission in large part because there's a big picture of you cannot have a parklet on like page three of that book, but
Yeah.
I presume we'll be reworking that all.
Yes, we will, that that came from twenty sixteen, so we're gonna reconsider everything during the pandemic, um, loosen that up a little bit, but again, I think it's become valuable, and a lot of communities now, um, are doing it. Post-pandemic as people kind of become aware of it and are expecting it, so, we see this.
Active arts community, active arts culture and outdoor dining, all goes against very active systems.
Anything further on these new ideas, yes?
Some of these all got migrated into Boost.
Yeah.
Boost, so you take a look at this, you can see like interior brand program, business accelerator, small business membership. We're gonna consolidate those all into Boost, rather, you know, because they're all like housing, it's all a part of it, so are we okay to combine them under the Boost program? Take that and go on going, I said, now, funding is an issue, it's not only punches here. Using ARPA dollars predominantly to boost, so when the ARPA dollars are gone, you know, are we gonna continue the program? You know, find alternative revenue sources. This is very popular, probably worth eighty-five to me, and we asked about it all the time.
Well, that's the thing, if you think about an overarching economic development strategy, right? I think, didn't you use the term policy, a food ha- food policy, right? What is our economic policy? What what are we prioritizing in terms of our small business versus, you know, homegrown versus recruiting to the area? I think we don't have that articulated. I know I've had conversations personally, you know, with staff and 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 others, but I wonder if we shouldn't create a economic policy that would articulate continued support for things like Boost, because then it will leave its way into into the budget discussion, and we can figure out ways to sustain some of these things that we're doing that are popular and yet to be measured in terms of their impact, so we hope it's a good.
One, one thing's a second perspective, we get a lot of requests for, um, new information from businesses that are looking to relocate to Illinois. Most of them now want buildings, we have land, we don't have buildings. I remember about the policy in the past was, a lot of cities build industrial park, we give them raw land, but for the utilities, the streets, they'll build buildings. Now, businesses are expecting buildings, so that's a potential large investment that the city may need to consider, but it's something that we probably may have conversations about, if we wanna be in that competitive space of where we are, being able to track those businesses, because businesses wanna be able to be open within twelve months, and if they need to build a building, you do all that, that just cannot happen, so.
So those comments are in support of when you get on your policy?
Yes, absolutely, but again, that we really don't have, so.
Articulate it kind of, we could consider the management policy too, if you want. You know, if most of the work happens there, but I just thought it it sounded to me like a grouping of ideas, which is where a strategic plan should be at. Mr. Schmidt.
Develop an economic policy statement.
On on where we have here, the review TIP development opportunities.
Yeah.
Should that be transform and unglued as related to East Gate TIP?
It's gonna be ongoing, I mean, the tips.
No, I I mean, absolutely, I think, I mean, we're recognized this as like, I think we identified and and reviewed the best TIP opportunity.
We did.
So I think it's time to evolve that into a pretty clear path forward, and whether it goes forward or not, we're stepping down that process.
Well, it's like SSAs, we have three, got fourteen tips with with East Gate, two of them are retired, right? So, you know, some of them will retire over several years. Question is, some of them.
But I guess, I'm just saying, I wanna see the East Gate TIP taking up its its space. I recognize a lot of these would bring back into more broad pa- categories, but some things are also a big enough priority, most people have.
So, along that lines, you could develop an economic policy that says continued review of TIP opportunities. And and when I say that, I'm also saying, um, taking some away.
Bingo, yes.
You know, not just creating.
Yeah. No, no, we're not gonna create just to create, we're gonna pay our project tips.
Yeah, right.
We learn anything in Moline is that project tips work and area-wide tips fail. Or they don't produce like they're supposed to, and they're much more difficult for our, you know, in lockers, like the school district to agree to. Right, they don't wanna be, they don't wanna see those anymore, because they know that that's 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 a criminal. So they support East Gate because it's very condensed, compact, and it's project-driven, and then numbers work in it's form. Simple as that.
Okay. So we understand, are we understanding that that if I do, might be under different policy?
I still have to sit on board, please.
Okay. Let it work.
Worded exactly out, tip one.
Um.
Annual TIP.
Annual TIP.
Well, we could TIP development opportunities, that's currently worded, I mean, I think it's a, it's a, it's a worthy goal, and I I take the point that that includes removing someone that's appropriate so that we can bring more on, I think it's a, it's it's a way to work through that process.
TIP development opportunities.
I think it's taking it back from from blue, setting it in next phase, yeah.
Just let it go. We just let it go, let it run, it just runs with the plan.
Right.
Okay, they're taking.
Alright, anything further from the council on that? Um, we moved to our last two, three point three and three point four. Um, I have questions about the rebranding strategy. Takes a lot of dollars, correct?
It can't, doesn't have to, but it can. Depending on how you identify the rebrand.
Is now, is now the time to be doing that?
I would, I would think a great time to do it, it's a part of the Riverfront Development, that's coming out of life. That is the time to actually put the best foot forward and say, this is who we are. Right, but right now, we're we're moving in that, the momentum is going, and we're really rolling down quickly. When that plan gets rolled out, it will get rolled out during everyone's tenure. I think that's a good time to say who we are. It's like Mo Live, right? It started out as a success, a ten year celebration, but that's part of branding a community, right?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, any part of it's the signage, we have a new pool coming up.
New pool.
If we put, let's say we get a new logo, or do we change it a couple years later?
That's right.
Fire station, same thing, for the longer, there there could be costs later on that I can see.
I mean, you've got your city seal, you got this logo up here, I mean, that's a logo. That's not the city seal, that's just, that's our brand, yeah, right? And I would define it as the land that runs between two rivers, that's what it looks like to me when I see it, an insular river.
Well, maybe it's not a kind of thing that comes away from our, I was thinking of digging it out for now.
What were you thinking?
But what I was just about to say was that maybe we don't take it out, but it's something we're talking about when when we're actually needing money for it, and it's either a delayed goal or. When when we're actually needing money for it, and it's either a delayed goal or. It's on three point three.
Yeah, I know.
So I'll just let it sit there. That's okay. Anybody else? Corridors of opportunity then?
Last one.
The last one.
Last one, unless people have other things they wanna add to the last.
Right, come reverse.
Chief Senator.
Yeah. A lot of hell, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe should we have an overarching, you know, up there on the board, the fire metal, uh bowl, you know, deal with all things that are green. Maybe now's the time, solar is just one part of that, EV charging stations is another part of that. Uh. CNG stations, I mean, it's not just limited to EV, I mean, there's brand monies for all, right, so. Uh stations, one of the problems we have, for example, we have a big CNG fleet, right, pretty significant, say, right? About thirty percent of the fleet is CNG, we have a new fueling station going, and that over a million dollars for our use, right? That we share as needed with natural ink and vice versa, right? But the alternative fuels core, like, you get in that shot, they can't make it to the repair shop on on a tank CNG, right?
Base there.
Yeah, they can get there, but they can't get back, because there's. I mean, think about that, that's a great, that's a great thing, so, you know, one of the things, that's a number of alternative fuel. So.
Ryan.
I just, this is, sorry to get off topic here, do we, have we instituted with the city a plastic ban? Are we going to do that?
We still have to talk about it.
We still have to talk about it, and overall, this plastic and styrofoam and all. Unrecyclable. Private state.
During in city buildings.
City buildings.
That's something that our our uh working group has talked about, whole time we brought anything for, I know you had gift helped us with with um. Some language from other places that have done that in public buildings, there's a stepping stones, um, so. It I think there are things.
You know about those plastics, the new shopping bags, right, horrible thing.
Yeah, that's a separate idea, that's a separate idea.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's a whole other thing, but.
That's a separate, I mean, there's things that can, anybody on council can bring forward, those kinds of things, we have been to talk about it. In a working group and um, we're still gathering information on, you know, purchasing some of the recyclable. We can't talk so long, you talking, um, the.
All right, all right.
The uh recyclable utensils and things like that, we were doing research on that, so nothing's come out. It's last purchasing, so, um. I I I I I don't know, I like the baskets that are here that we've identified, I feel like. Policy is another basket that you might end up like putting some of these in, once you know what's really important, so unless.
Yeah.
But if that's for you to to put together, share us, share with us, right?
That's very sad, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing such two hour sessions, I don't think I've got the email yet. See where you're gonna initiate for two hours next week, hopefully you get everything done. How about you guys?
And now, if you're talking about the rent, you're saying anything with.
The right decision, the right options.
Mr. Schmidt.
Um, my only thought here is is I think we have some redundancy to a lot of things that are coming before. Um, yeah, we're changing professional grant ready since, I thought that was on another slide as well. I see.
I don't think so.
Okay, then establish.
That's already well underway, it's well organized, it's efficient, it's.
No, no, oh, I'm not seriously taking, I'm just, I thought it had been showed up on two pages.
Oh. Might be wrong, I don't know, one of us is right, one of us is wrong, it's a bit.
Um, and and some things like exploratory energy, I still think that makes sense, as it is available and is well going to go. But that probably belongs more up under one point six steward our titles.
Yeah.
The only thing I see on this page is stuff like that, but maybe things are are this classifying.
Yeah, like reclassify three point four, is that what you're saying?
Do you wanna rearrange three point four?
Well, and some of it makes sense, because it's talking about the truly the corridors, um. I'm not the areas for developing that, but then again, that's kind of redundant to some of what we talked about as far as.
Just, which is how it should be at this stage, if we're trying to collapse some things together to make them more manageable.
Yeah. Correct.
Correct?
Absolutely correct.
So, so I guess what your charge would be then, right, is saving every part of the furniture you still wanna see.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the plan, then let us know about your major action, you know?
We'll come back with three point four package, because three point four is huge. A lot of money, big expensive page. Yeah. Right.
Who wants to do next?
So I think, I think now that we got through that part of it, pretty much talked about all the different topics. Um, there are certain things, potential goals out there, I mean, obviously, the fire station needs to be in care. Uh, there's a lot of funny energy resources already expended to identify even where fire station would be located. Uh, to best serve response time, general public, residents, uh, and that's gonna be coming forward, so, right?
I have to be out there, so.
Okay, so we're gonna get that beyond the meeting stage, we're gonna pull on that, we're gonna bring it forward, we lay it out there. Because without building without a general obligation debt, the only way to build that fire station is that right here. So, talking to general obligation debt.
And teach them.
Yeah, that's correct, right, that'd be a max, right? You know, a lot of. So we'll find that, uh, I guess the college city mall, South Park Mall, so you know, that's that, we're regular communications with those folks. Even as of last, was it yesterday or Friday? It's Friday, I think, what I've been email, so I know for a fact that we're applying pressure. Try and get them back at the table, start talking, and see, you know, let's get this done, and we'll do the tip aside, whether the tip stays. Maybe one of the tips may collapse. It's not producing, non-producing tip, but there's no, no money owed to any of those things, we'll look at that. Um, other projects that that you both have on your report sheets, ideas you've got, have you heard anything? Did not heard something here tonight, a great question, that your constituents talked to you about when you went door to door. Or in communications with them, you know, literally in other ways, even on phone phones, at church at the queue, I don't care, uh. We'll be going.
I had a conversation with a gentleman over the weekend about Carson's Park. And how it does not have a fence, and there's traffic on all floors, door sides. So I was over there for an hour and a half, and I saw people blow for the south line, I also take care of kids with, um. So there are only certain parts we can, and those parts. Um, children learn through um developing their body, growth over skills through the toys that they play with, and the equipment we have in playgrounds. And, um, sorry about you, um. The, some of the playground equipment that we have are not conducive with children. So I was wondering if there was some way that we could, um, look at that, except, you know, different.
Playground equipment?
That we can put in, um, not every park needs to have a fence, but we do have to have some parks with fences. So like if I go to a park and I have multiple kids with disabilities, I frequent Stevens Park all the time, great park. Plus if you have kids, um, with multiple ages, they hit, so you have the slides for the the littles, the um schoolagers, some of the like the older kids. Um, also while we're at the parks, you see adults, autistic adult, um, also use parks. Um, according to CDC, we have, um, one in thirty six children are diagnosed with autism. Five point four million adults have autism, so, um, Carson's Park is dangerous. So, um, I I was there this weekend.
That the park that's dangerous or.
It's the surrounding.
People who so try to do it.
It's the surrounding area.
Yeah.
So like, when I talked to a gentleman, his son is thirty eight years old, he's autistic, um, he can no longer play basketball at the park. Um, because the fencing is L shape, so it'll encompass some of the playground equipment. But it's it's doesn't good if you have a basketball, it would just go off to the side. Um, but also because that's not fenced in, he can no longer use the fence, and he's lived there since the seventies, so. He has nowhere to go, um, the traffic in that area and then it not being fenced in, um. Is real dangerous, um, so I, that that was one of the things that I had controversies, but, and I've experienced it too.
I'm thinking that, when I think along the lines of Human Rights Commission, and they're always paying attention to what a community is talking about with. You know, the death surveys and et cetera, I don't think we have addressed broadly, you know, how we are, um. Disability friendly, if we are, or what kind of work we need to do on that in Malins, we, I have not been a part of a broader conversation about that. But I heard in that video, right? They they mentioned accessibility and accessible walkways, et cetera, et cetera, if we're gonna live up to the goal of being law, being inclusive. Probably should find a quality of place or infrastructure or some kind of, you know. How are we making accommodation for being disability friendly, I'm not sure kids can grant travel.
I'm curious, because the fence was just removed, last six months or whatever, I've been there for twenty years, and there was a fence. And then now the fence was taken out because the residents.
Well, it it's a, we'll let Eric answer it, it was an issue.
Exactly.
So, yes and no, um, we did have a lot of backlash about removing the fence, but then we got a lot of compliments on. How that fence, basically that playground and that park haven't been updated since the nineties. And so by putting a new fence in, or putting a fence that borders playground, updating the playground, removing the trees. The citizens are very excited about what we've done. I'll send it here, now, National Parks Recreation Association, um, comes out and says that. They're looking, they want cities to remove fencing when possible, to make it more open and more vibrant, and make a a great point. About, um, people with disabilities, making sure that.
Yeah.
There was a traffic study done, we said that kind of removed, that said eighty three percent of people that drive by there. Are either going up the speed limit or below the speed, uh, that does not, you know, talk about.
It's not a speed limit, well, I saw people speed, it was blinking glowing through the stop line and a stop sign. And I was there for an hour and a half, and I, we just was like, let's watch this car, and it just kept blowing through.
So at one point, that was brought up to the Complete Streets Commission, where Mr. Driver was here about possibility of. Getting blinking stop signs there, uh, because they were saying that it was the buses that were blowing through the stop signs. Um, and that ultimately got shut down, uh, by the blinking stop sign, because whatever the Complete Streets did. I I can't speak to that, so I don't really recall, but, uh, so, yeah, the the park board did vote on just putting a fence. That borders the playground to keep them inside, also another thing that the the citizens around there were complaining about. Um, when we remove their fences, essentially that we removed their dog park in Carson's. Our ordinance says you can't have a dog in a fenced area of a park unless it's a dog, and that did, um, have gates that you were able to shut. And we even, I even have a letter from a lady that said, you know, how did you do this, we treated this as a dog park, and we don't want dogs. Um, off leash or on leash in an area where children's, so that was another factor in the reason why they removed, um, portions of the fence.
It was a very contentious issue during the half of the calendar.
Well, I was aware of it, so just thank you.
Unbelievable, probably the biggest. It was, it was, it was a rough ride for everybody involved, there was forces on both sides fighting to keep it or take it down.
But the. The broader point, though, that is well suited here when it comes to what are we looking for in the future is.
Yeah.
How are we implementing, putting anything that has equity in mind for those with disabilities?
Uh, maybe. Oh, for example, in the pool, the brand new pool, I mean, you're making accommodations for people with disabilities there, plans, it's required. And we, you know, they'll contribute to general services, we need to, we're towards this, everything we need to. Make care of the issues with these disabilities, accessibility, you know, there's a lot.
Um, who was first, Mr. Mercedes and then Schmidt?
Yeah, just like, and thi- this is maybe, I believe, Hartside Park has it, so that it's ADA, it's, or am I wrong?
Riverside, yeah, Riverside has has that.
Riverside. Right, is is there any other parks, and is that stuff that we can communicate?
So it doesn't have a rubberized surface, so every playground that's installed in the city of Malins. Needs ADA required, and and Rod could probably go into a little bit more detail on that. What you're talking about is a rubberized surface in comparison to wood chips, so wood chips meets ADA. Uh, but the the rubberized surface, um, obviously is more expensive, but then that's more your like any ability. That's the only part.
So that's the only, okay, and, uh, yeah, because I know when it it first happened, there was articles on the news and stuff like that, so. Uh, maybe we we can communicate through our social media or, uh, wh- wh- these things, I, or other avenues, it would be beneficial, because people. Um, probably don't realize that, that's a great part.
And that park, that park is, Riverside is made for much younger kids.
Uh.
Probably to the age, who said?
Well, Mr. Schmidt.
Um. No, and and I think that taking a stock of our, not just parks, but larger pieces too, of where we need to provide better access. Isn't we have been, um, we often talk about it, but it has not made it to, I don't think, the way we're grouping out of the larger piece. Looking at parks as a major one, um, that is very supportive there, I think that one other thing. And this is a little into the weeds, and there's nothing to throw up here, but it's on the topic of parks, I thought I saw once upon a time. But I've never been able to find it again, so I'd be able to imagine it, where we had kind of a matrix to our parks that sort of let you know what age range was appropriate. I know that our different playgrounds are appropriate for different age ranges of kids, or like at Riverside Park, where it is kind of that all abilities park. Uh, when I look at a park, right, to understand, like, it'd be really awesome as a parent to be able to see, like, you know. The, uh, Carson's Park is for older kids, it is not a great park to take my two year old to. Uh, but my seven year old has just started to really enjoy it, and and the others where, you know, that's, I think just having a, uh. That information more rarely available of like, uh, if that, if it's something we could do of like, not just this has a playground, but this has a playground for that age range.
A little bit hard, I'm sure, and I got as the major itself the parks and says, if it's not in there, that would be really easy to.
It's 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 just a little idea, but it's something that.
The non-directive directing.
Yeah, that would be really neat to try to do, right?
That's right, right.
I'm thinking out loud.
Okay, anything else, if anyone noticed, gaps, that's just the.
I would just like, everybody to keep in mind that autistic kids and adults are rats, that's the whole purpose of the fence. So even if they're fifteen years old, the older we get, they run. And as a parent, um, you never wanna have to make the choice of which kid do I say? Let's stay with these kids or the child that has disability and is running. So if we can kind of eliminate or alleviate some of that, and it's not every park needs a fence, but just. There needs to be some that are designated, so then if you have a child with disabilities, you know, we can use this park, this park, this park.
Something for us input for new park, what type of the park master plan?
I would just reiterate.
That's where that goes.
I don't have a lot of experience with parks, I was.
Oh, we're working on it, pass.
I would just reiterate that that's what the citizens, that everybody want events, I think we should try to accomplish. We're all about listening to what the people want. And I I got a lot of calls on that too. Probably same guy you got.
Yeah, there's a
Okay, well, there's a group, I mean, there, yeah, I got more than one call on. But yeah, it's uh, I could see where that's a dangerous they could be dangerous, you got kids, and what if you live in that neighborhood, you have a two year old kid, you want to take him part of it. You know, you gotta run if this two year old stake off too.
They'll catch him.
They won't catch him. So it's the team.
So I'm wondering what the utility of sharing would be at this time, or maybe it's more after you repackage, then you can like, um, plus.
I bet you you never use the darts, but they're there for
Yay.
where you need the gun. For yourself.
Oh, yes, this farce.
I hope this could be the appropriate time, but I'm just gonna throw this out, and if you want to hold to a later point, that's fine. Um, I've been able to tell all of the existing council or new that we have ended the year in the glare. And today I finished updating the commitments of money being forward un-unfinished last year through the three years. And it appears that we have one time money, this is one time, of one point seven million dollars that we could throw towards, I had to say one time projects. I throw out ideas, I mean, this is just a resident solid Riverside Park. Escape park, there's no funding that were either of those two tried yet.
Street one, seven or one thing.
None of it. And I shall go verify this brings our general fund balance back up to twenty five percent over that three year period, so as we continue in a recession, we're setting ourselves up an excellent financial situation for budget. Um, another thing is the I seventy four uh riverfront development, as you know, we spent all the money we had allocated for um out of arcathons for the Heritage Burgess Heritage Church, um, so there's not money right now for the riverfront, and I know everyone's excited about that master plan and what we're gonna do. Um, we've talked about some additional funding for CIP, although if you one time, it would be a little bucket of money. Is it money that we add towards the fire station? I need creative ideas, I'm just saying we have one point seven, we had creative ideas here, we didn't it would help with the budget, so we could start trying to incorporate that.
Yeah, the the I dot property is something that we need money for as well, and I I keep wondering when they're gonna come out with.
Very shortly.
So.
Very, very soon.
Okay, so
It's coming up very quickly.
That's another one that I would throw on your list.
Just so you know, the I dot properties are, is that all of the abandoned right of way that state has for the old bridge structures worth? When they vacate that, those are revenue parks, also it's access that they have to get rid of it. We have the first right of refusal on every single person. So none of it will be publicly lit.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
That's gonna cost a lot of money, that's for that.
Yeah, and following that, I think that reserving that to make sure we're in the right position for that situation is probably um, that has a real strong side to me, but I I think we also know that there are not that I don't want to exclude anyone from bringing another idea to the table, but we we have a number of those ideas that you just mentioned, that money is not there, um where that's the opportunity, the best opportunity to spend the money and put that forward. To put the one point seven toward the upcoming fires, I mean, all of these, um those are the places I would wanna go, I think, within our existing pieces, unless there's something new, but I don't think I'm gonna ask. But especially particularly for new members, if you have to sell something, what's the priority is, I don't wanna conclude anyone else. But that's that's my generally.
Well, thank you for, to everyone who made that possible.
It is the entire group, it's your entire management group.
Wonderful, thank you.
You got a great team, Paul, you're a good work for it.
Yes, thank you. So anything further, Mr. Timian, do you have anything further?
Uh, no, I do not, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So if there is nothing further, we will look forward to a revamped version that that we will uh bring to be adapted sometime
I will change.
Yeah, I've done it in the summer.
Yeah.
So. Okay, time to do it. So we move then to miscellaneous business. Uh, I got this in the mail today, uh Channel Cat started to advertise their summer, summer schedules. Um, always wonderful for people visiting, and I just wanted to make sure people knew that is gonna be happening. Um don't have anything else at the moment. But I believe I have talked with all of you about your um assignments or what what remedies and boards and commissions you can be on, and we're working through that on the formal adoption um through the the next meeting. So we'll be off to the races, if you will, learning and being part of those conversations, see you why. Um, yeah. Ms. Murphy, do you have anything for the good of yours?
No.
Okay, Mr. Macias.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, could might be, uh, I should've talked about earlier, so could just get a couple of fans in here? And not really go all the way, well, just a couple of fans. It's it's only gonna get hotter and uh, you know, where you're late like this, it's not the best, you know, uh atmosphere to be.
In other words, you're working on that and it's
Just, I'm sure there's that's not the same, sorry.
I think they're working on the AZ.
They started working.
They tried, okay.
Oh, is there something wrong with it?
Oh.
Oh. Oh, wow.
Speaking of one stop shop.
Okay, well, to my point, that's the kind of things that I'm, you know. We're doing some stuff here.
It's an old physical plant, and I'm glad that it's still heated, so now we better get it to cool, flicking and cold. It's why you see the window open all over the city.
Mr. Riza.
Uh, but yes.
This is just like general announcements, or if you have anything to share.
Yes, very little, and very thick, okay. Uh, over the weekend, uh, I got a few calls, and some would like to know that, uh oh, your order person, I have a question. And first question is, you know, the sidewalk in front of my house is uneven or broken. That is in general, in general, uh uh intersection uh on our road is broken, can you fix it? So these are in general, uh, I teach that immediately continuously, and but in particular, what I would like to say that I, what I've experienced in Moline, more people are most I've experienced a large section of people are elderly person. And I got a request from few elderly person that uh there is uh, there is no designated recreation center for retail or elderly person. They said that there are a lot of students, there are places we can go. But uh, if there is a, someplace like a club or recreation center where we can meet in the afternoon, we can play something, we can spend some times, that's what I I got, I got.
And they just need to be directed to the Moline Township Activity Center down here?
Yeah, that is.
In downtown? Um, and the Y and other resources like that, were you able to give them resources, or do you need those, those resources for?
Um, they were asking, uh, they feel that they they would like to uh engage uh their community more effectively. Uh, I I my my understanding is that mostly they are retired or single person staying at home. They would like to have hopefully more engaged.
Okay. So that um reminds me of something I should tell you all, so last week I um was invited to sit in on a chat with representatives from the Surgeon General's office, Ms. McWhorty. And he completed his study with his team about social connection and social isolation. And they are rolling out all of their um PR on this and all of the recommendations to communities. And I have established something, it's called Good Gatherings, where it's kind of a community potluck that has gone public, but I haven't shared it yet on mayoral things, but we can build on some of the the Surgeon General's recommendations. In fact, Friday, I'm sitting in on the um session with the mayor of Urban California, whom I know from a training group I was in, and the mayor of Racine, Wisconsin, they have some particular programs that Surgeon General wants to highlight for reestablishing social connection, because there's a lot of health benefits. Um, and and he's looked he's done a retrospective from pre-pandemic times and then how we were impacted by pandemic, so I don't know if you're all aware, but the Surgeon General doesn't make recommendations, policy recommendations like this unless they're serious. And so this is perfect information to have, that we either need to make known for the elderly right, who get their information in multiple ways, not just on the internet, right? Or we need to create more connection somehow, thank you for sharing that. Anything further?
No.
No? That's finished. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Your Honor.
That's right. I forget, Mr. Timian, you have anything for us?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, I had the opportunity last week to participate in the public session for um discussing desires for the new skate park. And it was uh a very fun and exciting place to be, a lot of people coming in with opinions and talking about how that can move forward. Um, anyone who is interested in providing his feedback, still there is a survey available online of uh Renew Moline is the most best to find that, or the Parks Recreation on Facebook, there, both of those. Uh, so I just, anyone who who sort of has that opinion, I think there's there's a lot of opportunities to put that out there. Um, a lot of discussion about how to make it, how to make it be some of the blasts, that it's it's not gonna have some downfalls, that some escape parks in the past I've run into. And I think a great opportunity uh to to push that forward.
Thank you, anything to say?
No, Your Honor.
Okay.
Looking at the other.
I understand. Um, but thank you everyone for this time, I do realize tomorrow we have roles and responsibilities at six.
At six, we will have food.
And it'll probably be like an hour.
An hour, hour fifteen.
Okay.
I, um
Right, we do all this work on the front end, so that we just click along.
Right, yeah, this this will end.
Exactly. And we have any public comment at this time? No, no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
The who?
So moved by old person, Macias, I can advise the person O'Brien, I need full call please though, because we have an online participant.
Other person, Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
I'm Macias. The doc.
I'm
Timian.
Aye.
Bench.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Astro.
Aye.
The eyes, Naline.
Right, we're adjourned, and if you could keep, can we give these back to, um, so we have a good future? We could help.